Can we go, Patrick? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'll have a roll call by our city clerk. Claire. Okay, if you all rise, well, before I say that, if you all be seated, have a seat, they're gonna put 50 chairs or so out in the lobby, and there'll be sound out there that you can, that you can watch. So, everybody needs to have a seat. Okay, so if you rise, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Rigby.
You'll please join me. Ready, begin.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum during the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. There's also listed, this is also listed on the cover sheet. And then, one other thing, it's just all attendees should remain seated during the meeting. Persons need to stand are requested to step outside the City Council chambers where the video and audio are playing in the lobby out there. So, with that, we will go with the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
At our closed session, I will have our city attorney, Darryl Piper, take us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session on item CS1 on this evening's agenda. No action was taken that's required to be reported.
Okay, and so we have three presentations this evening. And first, I would like to invite J.C. Nguyen up here. He's one that's done our Bregal Terrace Easter Egg Hunt organizer every year for the last several years. He's gonna do a brief presentation here at the podium. Have to go around there with a microphone and look at us.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thought you would come here, 'cause I was gonna presentate you.
Oh, you're gonna present?
Yeah.
You want me to come down there?
Yes. And all of you, I would like to invite you. It's a thing, you know, we're all involved here. And this is where my man right here, Rob Johnson, see if you can hold him in the middle. Put him in the middle. All right. I just have a few words to say from all my council over the years. This plaque is to say thank you to all the people of Vista, along with the City Council, the Parks and Rec Department, city staff, and all those behind the scenes who played the role in keeping the Vista Easter Egg Hunt in Bregal Terrace Park tradition alive during these economic time, trying times. To all our Golden Egg donors, A&amp;D Glass, Herb and Jackie Wesson, VFW Post 7041, The Synopolis, Jeff and Vicky Bertrand, and Libby McBride, who all donated generously to keep it going, who year in and year out helped keep the tradition alive and the smile on the faces of the kids. To our local service organizations, thank you to the Pride of Vista Lions Club for sponsoring the event and providing the insurance needed each year, and the donations from our volunteers from the Optimists, the Sunrise Kiwanis, the Migo de Lions, and the Elks Lodges for all you do for our community. And finally, to my many teen groups who sat up and helped, helped the little, stood up and helped the little ones, the Vista High Football Team who came out every year, nine years in a row, and set up the hunt fields and tore them down when we're done, the Rancho Bueno Vista Folk Local Dance Groups, Sensei Sal from Karate Kids up here on North Melrose, Jose Jaime and the Vista Ballet Folk Local, Tanya's Dance Studio, and the Vista Skate Coalition. And not to mention our beautiful Pride of Vista Lion queens and princesses who came out and painted all them little kids' faces over all the years there. You'll see them on the pictures as you go. And finally, to Pastor Gaily Reynolds and her teen crew from the Vista Assembly Church for blessing our event with their presence and direction. All the fine businesses and groups I just listed are just the tip of the iceberg of Vista's, of Vista's goodness from right here. When it came to the City Council meeting back in 2009, it was out of a little bit of disappointment that our city could no longer afford to provide our children the simple tradition of an egg hunt at the park, and never in my wildest dreams did I predict how much our community would provide in the times of need. This whole experience has been a blessing for me and Dawn, she's my wife. And I wanna thank each and every one of you for all you did to keep the family tradition alive, because as the plaque says, traditions really do matter. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
I just wanna thank J.C. for all that he did, 'cause he kept, kept it going all these years, and so, we appreciate, we appreciate what you did. Thank you, J.C.
Nine years.
Nine years, yeah.
All right, thank you.
And actually, I think we're going to continue to have the Easter egg thing. I don't know, it'll change a little bit, but the city is gonna continue something, some program there, so, at Easter, 'cause we won't let it all go. Yeah, okay. So, our next presentation is Brett Schatzchenbach, Chief Executive Officer of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and he's going to present a post-event report from the 2018 Strawberry Festival.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Appreciate the, the time to come back and chat about this event. I know you have an exciting evening on your agenda tonight, so I'll be brief, be bold, and I'll be gone. So, Strawberry Festival 2018 was a, a big success. We wanna share some of the results with you. There we go. We did have a very strong crowd once again. We had over 440 street fair vendors, which was 6% growth from the previous year, and it was our most ever. We also had the most runners ever in our, in our 10K, 5K, and kids' run, which was exciting. Runners represented 17 different states. That's the most we've ever had in our event, which was exciting. All the different counties from Southern California and every city in San Diego County once again participated in the run. And the run, our 10K, 5K, if you take the kids' portion out, we had a 25% growth from our highest ever. So, that was very exciting for us to see the 10K, 5K portion grow so much. 34% of our runners were from Vista, another 35% from the 78 corridor, 16% from San Diego, other parts of San Diego, excuse me, another 12% from Southern California, 2% from out of state. I know that doesn't sound like a big number, but as your event keeps growing, that's our highest percentage of out-of-state participants ever, and so, that's exciting for us, because we know, and we had testimony from people that said, "Hey, we come to this area every year for Memorial Day weekend, and we go out of our way to come to this event." So, that was very exciting for us. We had a lot of media coverage, as in the past. We were in many print publications, lots of TV coverage, I'm gonna talk about that in just a second, on radio, social media as always, and then, of course, you could see us all over town. We had six different pre-event contests, which we run on purpose to try and build anticipation and participation in the event, and we've done those for a few years. We had just a ton of activity on our website just in the month of May, 94,000 visitors, 25,000 unique visitors in the month of May. Over 500,000 people we reached just through Facebook alone in May, 1.9 million impressions through Facebook, quite a few uses of our hashtag #VistaStrawberryFestival on Instagram, and our Strawberry Festival Run hashtag on Instagram as well. And over the years, our, our presence keeps growing and growing and growing online from our continual relentless PR efforts, and so, we're now up to 374 million online impressions over the last nine years, which is pretty substantial. And we, this year was our, we had more pre-event TV appearances than we'd ever been invited to in the past, five of them, which was really exciting. It was the first time we got invited to Fox, first time we got invited to KFMB, KUSI, we've been several times, and we had, once at their studio, once where they came to downtown Vista and highlighted the businesses in downtown Vista, and then also the morning of KUSI was there. So, those were all great evolutions. I mentioned that. Large attendance as well as in the past. I did wanna share a couple of new elements that we, we did this year. This was the first time we expanded the event to Paso Santo, the new Paso Santo Corridor on South Santa Fe, and it was extremely successful. The vendors there were thrilled with the reception. They had, many attendees talked about how it really created a cohesive loop for the event by including that, and so that was very successful. We did meet with city staff after the event to kinda have a, a debrief and talk about how that worked, closing down South Santa Fe for the whole day for the event, and they said they had absolutely no issues, and so we're very excited to continue that and be able to hopefully grow that as well. So, that was a great new wrinkle for us at the event. We also really increased signage and visibility elements. The, the big red balloon was over the beer garden, so that people would stop saying, "Where's the beer garden?" And then, the scaffolding you see there was 12-foot tall in the busiest intersection to just try and help people find some of the key elements, and those were received really well. We had to move the carnival rides to the school grounds because of construction on 100 Main, and that went well. We haven't had our official debrief with the school district, but, you know, sometimes no news is good news. So, but overall, it went well. I think it's the best Plan B we can have in the downtown because of, you know, growth, and growth's a good thing, but, so we're hopeful to continue that there and be able to have those carnival rides there and the school grounds in the future. We also had some new contests. Instead of our old Strawberry Idol, we did Vista's Got Talent, which was a much more diverse talent competition. That particular trio was incredibly talented right there. I'm not sure why they didn't win. I don't know, it was fixed. It was rigged, I don't know. But no, it was, it was a great contest, and we had participation in this contest from Temecula, from downtown San Diego, from Chula Vista, from, I mean, people came from a wide variety of places in Encinitas and beyond to participate in this competition. So, we look forward, we're gonna, and we worked with the Moonlight in kinda crafting it and helping us judge it, and so, they were very excited about how it went, so we're gonna look to continue to grow that and modify that for the event. So, that was exciting. It costs a lot to put this event on. We spent over $167,000 to put on the overall event, and 65% of that was spent in Vista. And of course, that's a goal of ours, is to shop local, like we preach, to our residents. Another 20% was spent along the North County, other, other parts of North County where we spent that money, so, I think that was good. In the future, we're very committed to keeping it a one-day event, although my board almost every year says, "We should expand this to a two-day event." It's very difficult to close down the streets of downtown for more than one day, you know, it impedes business to do that, so, I keep reminding them that that's not a good idea. So, we're gonna keep, keep it a one-day event. Our, our goal is to grow to 480 vendors. Eventually, I'd like to have our event pushed all the way to Pepper Tree on South Santa Fe, take that whole section there. We'll have to get there slowly, baby steps, but that's a goal. We wanna grow to 2,500 10K, 5K runners. We did have to change the course this past year for the 10K and the 5K, also because of construction, construction on the, the development right behind the 99 cent store. I know they just now have actually started moving earth, but we thought they were gonna be by then, so we rerouted our, our route, and so now, we have a route that we will use for the next few years until that's done, and hopefully, we can go back to that trail that incorporates the Vista Conservancy Trail and down through whatever the new extensions will be to Wildwood. Our big five-year goal is to get to 550 vendors and 125,000 attendees by 2022, so, we're working on that, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to entertain them at this time.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brett, thank you. Every year, I think, wow, this is the most spectacular event we could be doing here. I don't know how you could make it any better, and every year, it gets better. Every year, it gets bigger. Every year, I get so many compliments, and I take them all gladly, but it's to you and to your crowd that puts this together. This is what Vista is about, this is what community is about, and it's good to bring people in. Vista is a destination, and this is one of the reasons why. So, thank you. Good job. I'm looking forward to next year.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Councilmember Green.
All right, I also wanna thank you. I think this is one of the best strawberry festivals ever. It actually almost felt like a little mini Del Mar Fair. I can't tell you how many people actually told me that. There was a lot of different varieties of food, and as a guy who is a fan of food, I really appreciate you making that happen. There was one other thing that happened this year too, and I just kinda wanna give a shout out to, there was like a fastest team in Vista or something? I didn't see that on your PowerPoint. Who, who won the fastest team in Vista this year?
We did have a civic challenge for our 5K event, and it was primarily the school district against the city of Vista, and the city of Vista won the civic challenge.
Oh, the city of Vista beat the school district. Okay, so...
Yes, they did. One of their key members of the team is right here behind me here, yes.
There you go, old lightning shoes over there, Mr. Conley, so. All right, well, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you so much. It was great to have the healthy competition. The superintendent actually called talking trash, so, after we won, it was pretty awesome. So, all of you VUSD kids can let them know that they need to work on their cardio and maybe do some speed drills for next year, so, thank you so much, Brett, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, our final presentation is going to be given by Sandag. San Diego Association of Governments is, and it's well-known as Sandag, and I think our Poway Mayor is, Steve Voss is gonna be doing the presentation tonight? Yes?
That's right, thank you. It is so odd to be here on this side of the dais, rather than up there like you when I'm in Poway playing mayor, but I'm here tonight...
Are you nervous?
Now, I probably am. I'm here tonight as the vice chair of Sandag, and I'm joined by Kim Kawada, our chief deputy executive director, who has overseen Sandag for the last year, and you'll hear more about that later. First, I wanna thank all of you who are involved and contribute to Sandag. Mayor Judy Ritter is a primary board member and transportation committee alternate. Councilman John Aguilera is an alternate to the board and an alternate to the regional planning committee, and Councilmember Amanda Rigby is an alternate to the board and an alternate to the public safety committee. So, we wanna start by saying thank you for your service to Sandag on behalf of your city. We're gonna give a 2017 region update and show a video. I'm gonna focus on the accomplishments in Vista. Then, we'll move on to Sandag's focus in 2018. This will be followed by our outreach to Vista. So, let's start with that brief video, and then we'll pick up from there.
With the construction of highways, transit systems, railways, and bike and pedestrian networks, 2017 was a literal building year for the Sandag Board and its partner agencies. Revenue from our region's TransNet half-cent sales tax, leveraged with outside matching funds, continue to power dozens of projects throughout the region, as well as widespread environmental preservation efforts. These investments have taken place throughout the region, from Oceanside to South County, to the urban core, to suburban East County, providing travelers with more and more choices. The Mid Coast Trolley is the biggest transportation project ever undertaken in San Diego County. It will extend the Blue Line Trolley 11 miles from Old Town north, along the I-5 to UC San Diego and into University City. When the line and its nine new stations open in 2021, it is expected to attract 21,000 new transit riders a day. Being built in conjunction with the Mid Coast Trolley, when completed, the newly constructed Gilman Bridge will gracefully span I-5 just north of the La Jolla Village Drive interchange. The project, which broke ground in 2017, will provide a much-needed connection between Gilman Drive on UC San Diego's West Campus and Medical Center Drive on the East Campus. Build NCC is an all-encompassing project that includes highway, rail, environmental, and coastal access improvements for cities of Encinitas and Solana Beach and the North Coast Corridor. Work also broke ground this year on a comprehensive 102 million effort to restore the lagoon itself. The replacement of the rail bridges over the lagoon are happening simultaneously in order to minimize impacts on the sensitive environment in that area.
We get to work integratively with the rail and the freeway work, and that integration is through our partnerships with Caltrans and Sandag. It's not often that an environmental organization gets to really sit at the table with the people planning and designing and actually implementing transportation. And we were able to give recommendations on what we think needed to change in the corridor to allow the system to be more natural, and they took that advice and they're implementing it.
Many other important additions to the transportation system have made major progress during 2017. Progress continued on the South Bay Rapid Project. From the Ojai Mesa border, passengers will be able to travel through Ojai Ranch on a dedicated guideway into eastern Chula Vista. The Rapid Buses will be able to use a new direct-access ramp recently added to Interstate 805 and connect to downtown San Diego. This dedicated guideway through eastern Chula Vista will be the first of its kind in the region, allowing the Rapid Service to avoid traffic snarls on busy arterial streets.
We're at the Heritage Station as part of the South Bay Rapid Route, and from here, you have easy access to downtown and the border. This particular station is located adjacent to restaurants, doctor's offices, and pretty much anything you would need. It's sighted at the heart of the community.
The two new centerline transit stations at University Avenue and El Cajon Boulevard will allow Rapid Service along Interstate 15 to quickly stop, pick up passengers, and continue back onto the active freeway lanes, avoiding the freeway ramps and the hassles of surface street traffic.
These are the first freeway-level transit station platforms in San Diego County.
These stations opened in the first quarter of 2018. Work continued at multiple locations along the Coastal Rail Corridor, known as LoSan. In partnership with the North County Transit District, the Oceanside Transit Center was expanded to increase the number of trains that can board passengers simultaneously and to allow freight trains to pass through. The $28.1 million upgrade made the station more efficient by adding a third track and an additional platform for the roughly 1.2 million passengers that use the station every year. Work also continued on the Elvira to Morena double-track project. This segment will add a 2.6-mile second track from State Route 52 to just south of Balboa Avenue. When linked to double-track segments on either end of the project, the result will be a continuous 10.3-mile stretch of double-track to improve passenger and freight operations in the corridor. The Sandag Active Transportation Program also achieved some important new milestones in 2017, including the opening of the State Route 15 commuter bikeway. The approximately one-mile bikeway links the mid-city communities of Kensington, Talmage, Normal Heights, and City Heights with the Mission Valley Community, running along I-15, but safely separated from vehicle traffic. A one-mile segment of the inland rail trail in the city of San Marcos was completed in February 2017. This segment is part of a 21-mile bikeway that will connect from Oceanside to Escondido. Progress continued on the Bay Shore Bikeway, which will eventually extend 24 miles all the way around San Diego Bay. Relief is on the way for one of the urban core's most frustrating bottlenecks. Work advanced dramatically on the Genesee Avenue interchange over the last year, with a new widened 10-lane bridge and more efficient on-and-off ramps expected to open in 2018. The effort to create a third border crossing in the region in east Ojai Mesa also received a big boost. The state of California awarded the State Route 11 project $45 million to help pay for the acquisition of property where the new border crossing will eventually sit. We wished the South Bay Expressway a happy 10th birthday in 2017. Sandag acquired the rights to operate the tollway about six years ago. The Sandag Board immediately cut the tolls on the facility to relieve congestion in eastern Chula Vista and draw traffic away from the I-805. The Sandag iCommute program worked hard to achieve its mission of reducing traffic congestion and greenhouse gas emissions by promoting alternative means of transportation. Successes during 2017 included the region's busiest-ever bike-to-work day, with more than 10,000 bike commuters visiting one of more than 100 pit stops throughout the region. iCommute partnered with Uber to expand the iCommute guaranteed ride-home program, offering free rides to alternative commuters facing an urgent need to get home. iCommute also partnered with Waze Carpool, who was subsidizing up to $50,000 for carpooling to the highest employment areas in the region. In early January 2017, the U.S. Department of Transportation selected the San Diego region as one of the 10 designated proving grounds in the nation to encourage testing and sharing information around autonomous connected-vehicle technologies. Sandag, the city of Chula Vista, and Caltrans District 11 teamed up to seek the Proving Ground designation.
The Proving Ground gives our policymakers and the public an opportunity to engage in how this technology is ultimately shaped as it comes into the marketplace.
It's been an amazing year. Stay tuned, there's more to come in 2018.
So, there you got a pretty good overview of Sandag's work in the region and highlights on how regional connections are integral to a city's interconnectedness. It's important to keep in mind that regional projects benefit people who live and work in Vista. This map that we're gonna put up here, made using data from the Sandag Activity-Based Model, shows all the traffic to and from Vista. The thicker lines indicate more traffic. It's clear that Vista residents and your workforce rely on the regional system in addition to improvements within the city. Now, as you saw in the video, there are 13 key projects that have regional impacts, and they are listed here. Many like the image of the traffic to and from Vista across municipal boundaries and form a tight network of various transportation options. Sandag's primary perspective is on the region, but we know it's important to point out local accomplishments. We have a one-page flyer that I think you've all been given, that points out the regional accomplishments on one side and accomplishments in and around Vista on the other side. Some highlights for Vista include, to date, Vista's been allocated $17.6 million from the TransNet Local Roads and Streets Program. In fiscal year 2017, Vista was awarded $2.2 million from the TransNet Local Roads and Streets Program. Currently under construction are the first segments of Vista's portion of the inland rail trail, which will eventually extend the full length of the Sprinter Rail Corridor in North County. Vista was awarded an active transportation grant of $5.6 million for one mile of the inland rail trail in the city. Sandag completed the draft project study report for the SR78 corridor, which I know is important to your city and other cities around it, 'cause I drove here from Poway today. And Sandag provided technical assistance via the Energy Roadmap Program for data collection and support a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, climate action planning, and to implement conservation measures. Now, currently, Sandag is engaged in hiring an executive director, which is vital for our organization and for the region. As I alluded to before, Kim Kawada has done an incredible job moving the ship in the right direction over the last year, and her expertise is invaluable. During this national recruitment, we've gone through an open and public process, including public outreach meetings and online surveys. The Sandag Board did final interviews of the top two candidates on August 17th, and we hope to announce a new executive director in late September. Now, beyond the large number of projects and programs we're working on at Sandag, we're also working to improve the organization's efficiency, effectiveness, and transparency. The organization is strong, but we can be stronger. We held focus groups and gathered community feedback. Then, we compiled the information and established a plan for systematic improvement. We call it our Plan of Excellence. Much of the feedback had to do with improving transparency and more effectively communicating with our member agencies. Effective communication is a key to success. That's one of the reasons we're here this evening. We're providing information to you and we'll be answering your questions, so you can share the information with your constituents. Now, as you saw in the video, we have a lot of major construction projects underway, and it'll continue in the coming years. In addition, we're working on major planning efforts and ensuring our operations run smoothly. The large capital projects you see on this list only show the expenditures that we made in fiscal year 2018. Here you see, we spent $312 million in 2018 on the 11-mile Mid Coast Trolley Extension from Old Town to University City. The total budget is $2.2 billion. We spent $106 million on improvements to Interstate 5 in North County called Build NCC. The total budget, $1 billion. We spent $28 million towards final completion of the South Bay Rapid Transit Route, which will open early next year. The total budget, $120 million. And along the border with Mexico, we spent $36 million on the Route 11 and Ojai Mesa East Border Crossing. Total budget, $682 million. We're well underway on the development of the San Diego Forward, the We're well underway on the development of the San Diego Forward, the 2019 to 2050 Regional Plan, which maps the region's transportation future. We're implementing Transnet and the Regional Bike Plan. In addition, as a result of Senate Bill 1, the region has been awarded more than $1 billion for various projects. Staff is also working on fine-tuning operations for the South Bay Expressway, the Interstate 15 Fast Track, and motorist aid services. Now, as a municipality, you know that outreach is a key to successfully communicating difficult issues to constituents. At Sandag, outreach to our member agencies and our partners is a high priority. Through press releases, social media, subscription newsletters, presentations, group outreach meetings, and briefings, we do our best to get the word out. We also offer tours of major work sites, such as the MidCoast Trolley Construction or South Bay Rapid or the work along the I-5 Corridor. As we work through the details in our regional plan, there are opportunities to hold stakeholder sessions right here in Vista via any forum that's best for your constituents. What we do want to know is how we can communicate better with you and with the region in general. So I want to thank you for having us this evening. Hope you and the attendees here will sign up for Sandag information on social media, which is listed on this screen here. And now, Kim Kawada and I are here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do I have any questions with the council here?
Oh, you're easy.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Yes, sir.
Can't let you off that easy, Steve.
You could.
This one's probably more for Kim. You have a... On the handout you have here on the traffic, I was just curious, what year was that? It says here that 28% of the vehicle miles traveled associated with Vista occurs within the city, and the other 72% is outside of Vista. Can you explain that a little bit more, just so the, you know, the public understands? And tell me when that statistic was taken?
I'll have to get back to you on the exact year the data was there, but what it is is we looked at everybody that either lives in Vista and needs to travel, or actually works in Vista. And so those lines show you that there's tremendous amount of travel. Obviously, the 78 is a huge, important project to the region and the north, to Vista and the North County region in particular. But you see how folks basically travel along the I-15, along the I-5, to get the job centers to the south. And so the purpose of showing this is that we're working on a whole bunch of different projects. And so why, while something like the North Coast Corridor, the widening of I-5 may not be directly in the Vista area, that it's actually benefiting both people that work in Vista and people that live in Vista.
Okay. Thank you.
Have any other questions? Councilmember Green.
You said that we received to date $17,666,709. Thank you.
Sounds about right.
You counted, yeah.
I mean, it's right here on your piece of paper. My question for you is, what percentage of Transnet money is that that Vista received? So like, say that, is there like $500 billion, and you gave us $17 million? Or is there like, what's the, what's the total Transnet money, is basically my question?
The total Transnet money we get every year is about $300 million right now. So I think that number that we showed you really was from when the Transnet measure started, which was, we started collecting funds in 2008 for the latest Transnet extension. So it's been fiscal, since 2008 till now.
So it could almost be, so out of $2.4 billion Vista received $17,666,000?
You're getting a portion of it.
I'm just trying to figure out what our equitable share is per se. Like, what are other cities getting, and what did we get?
And the cities, and what you get is there, you get sort of a minimum amount. There's actually a formula that's based a lot on your population and also your road miles. And so that's how we try to be equitable between the cities that have population and also that have a lot of road miles that they need to maintain.
And that's what I was trying to figure out, is how do we make sure it's an equitable split of that money? And is it equitable? So it sounds like you have a formula all worked out, where we're all getting our fair share per se. All right. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
So you got more than Poway.
As we should.
Do you have any other questions down here?
Thank you for coming up here.
Yeah, sitting down there. Thank you for fighting the 78, coming up here. Thanks for coming over and explaining it all to all of us. Okay, so with that, that's our last presentation. So that brings us to our consent calendar. And we have actually just three things on our consent calendar tonight. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to our clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And so we have three items, and if there's nothing that is to be pulled, I don't see anything pulled from the general public. So if anything's to be pulled, Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, so please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So then that leads us into our discussion items, and we have two discussion items this evening. The first one is our Climate Action Plan update, and our Community Development and Engineering Director, John Conley, is going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have been working on an update of our Climate Action Plan for about the past year. We've gone through a fairly extensive community outreach process over the last couple of months, and so my purpose tonight is to provide you some feedback on what we've heard from the community through that process, present you the information that was provided at those community meetings, give you a summary of what we heard, and then get some final direction before we go through the process of preparing actual plan update and a document that we'll be distributing. So I'm going to go through the presentation here quickly. The Climate Action Plan was originally adopted in 2013. It was a plan that we established as mitigation for our general plan update in 2012, based on significant greenhouse gas emission impacts that we anticipate from growth within our city over the next 25 to 30 years. The plan is to reduce GHG emissions, greenhouse gas emissions, from community activities as well as municipal activities, in support of the state's efforts under Assembly Bill 32. The Climate Action Plan also allows us to tier and streamline for environmental review for new development, which is one of the primary issues that we're looking at from the staff level. And it also helps us to achieve several of our general plan goals, lowering energy costs, reducing air pollution, and improving public health and general quality of life. So we've adopted, our adopted plan is available online. We're in the process of updating that. As part of the update, we have to do an inventory of our emissions, which we've completed. We have to model our business-as-usual activities out into the future to identify what our emissions level will be if we stay on the trajectory we're at, and what it will be if we achieve the reductions that we need to achieve. And we've drafted that, and I'll present that. We're now in the process of establishing what measures we need to identify and implement in order to reach the goal that the state's established, and we'll talk about that tonight. And the next step will be preparing the plan, which identifies how we're going to implement that. Part of our effort here is to provide consistency with plans in the region. Sandag, who just presented, is helping us with the consultant effort to support our updates so that we can be consistent with the region. Several questions we got during the public outreach process revolved around discretion, decision-making, who holds the authority for the Climate Action Plan, who's responsible for implementing it and updating it. It's clear that the council holds all that authority. The Planning Commission has been involved from a perspective of providing information and recommendations, and we've included them in this process and are continuing to. But the city council's the final decision-making body, and so we just wanted to make it clear to the public that it's at your discretion as far as what we implement and what we spend on this plan. So we updated our emissions inventory. We used base years of 2012 through 2014. That's the latest years that solid data is available. You'll see on the left, there's seven areas that were evaluated for emissions. Those are the categories in which emissions are generated, including transportation, electricity, natural gas, solid waste, water, and wastewater. On the right is a pie chart that shows what those emissions generate or what those categories generate. You can note that the blue, which is about half of the pie chart, is on-road transportation, which is the highest generator of GHGs, I think we all know. Electricity is second. That's the orange category at about 30%. And then the remaining five categories make up about the remaining, what, 20% there? So we've established what we generate in those emissions categories over the two years that we identified, 2012 and 14. Those are on the left of the chart. And then we've projected out in the future what our emissions level will be if we stay at a business-as-usual rate. In other words, we don't make any significant policy changes. So you can see that there's a drop that occurs up through 2020. That's in recognition of a number of state and federal efforts to cut our emissions that are in play, but it starts to increase in 2030 and 2035, and that's just a direct result of the population growth that's going to occur over that timeframe, despite all the efforts that are underway. So the state's identified some targets. We've used the state's targets to identify what levels we need to achieve. This is based on legislation that was approved at the state level. I'm not going to get into all of the details, but there are three different legislative actions that have been taken that require us to establish targets that we're going to reach for. They're all based on 1990 levels, so that's what everybody's trying to get back to. The first one was AB 32 to establish a 1990 level by 2020. And SB 32, which was passed later, they established a threshold of 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. And an executive order by the governor's office established a goal of 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. And so those are the projections that we're working on and what we're using to establish our targets. The chart here shows what the emissions-as-usual, business-as-usual, I'm sorry, levels would be. That's the orange bar that sort of spreads out to the right there. You can see, as I noted earlier, the emissions go down, and then they chart back up over the next 20 years as a result of population. The green line is Vista's targets. So you can see in 2020, we achieve our target, just based on the federal and state mandates that are in play. And then it descends down through the business-as-usual, and you can see below the federal and state efforts, which are the colored lines, there's a gap there. And the area below, I'm sorry, above the green line, but below the blue is the local gap. That's the emissions that Vista has to address and we have to mitigate, won't be handled by state and federal actions, that we have to address on a local level. So the intent of the plan is to try to fill that local gap or reduce those emissions with local measures. For reference, our 2030 estimated gap is about 90,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent. In 2035, that's 160,000 tons. For reference, our current plan that we adopted in 2013 only achieves about a 30,000-ton reduction, so it's three or four times what we currently have in play. So in the public forum, we provided a number of mitigation measures. We call them climate reduction measures that we could put into play to try to reduce our emissions. We gave everybody an opportunity to vote on them. I'm just going to roll through them here to give you some idea of what was discussed. We discussed municipal operations, which is city activities. That would include a position at the city to implement the cap, any renewable energy projects, employee commutes, municipal recycling, greening the fleet, anything the city can do to reduce their emissions from our own operations. Existing energy measures, this is energy efficiency within the community, looking at existing buildings. This would involve evaluating buildings at the time of sale or improvements for energy efficiency improvements, any kind of solar or other small-scale renewable energy projects, establishing community choice energy, which I know we discussed before, efficient water heaters and solar water heaters, tree planting, and certified city staff that can do energy efficiency evaluations. In the areas of transportation and land use, we looked at transit travel, how to get people to and from transit facilities more efficiently, commute trip reduction, carpooling primarily getting people out of their cars, smart growth, which is accommodating development near transit centers, generally within a half-mile, implementing our bicycle master plan, increasing van pool and iCommute, requiring EV charging, electric vehicle charging in residential homes, and adding EV charging stations throughout the city in commercial private developments. In the areas of water and wastewater, we looked at expanded recycling, reducing construction and demolition debris, reducing water use for outdoor landscaping, the possibility of requiring water efficiency fixtures, et cetera. I'm not going to go through everything here, but you get the idea. Adaptation, we looked at a number of issues with respect to what the envi, how the environment will change over time as a result of the climate change that's in play. The state's recently released a report that identifies what some of those potential impacts could be to, and so we'll incorporate that into our plan. With respect to the community outreach that we went through, we held six different meetings for various different groups. That included the Planning Commission and five presentations to public groups, including the general public, the South Vista Communities Group, some organized climate groups, the Townsite and Poder Popular groups, which were Spanish-speaking presentations, and business and chamber-focused outreach. And we also created an online survey link, which is available on the city's website, along with a summary of the efforts that we've gone through for the cap update. The meeting attendees were limited to six votes, and they voted on the measures. We received more than 150 votes on the different measures. All the results are public and on the city's website. We also had a number of questions asked that were included in a frequently asked question document, and so those questions and answers are also included on the website. All the write-in suggestions that we received were recorded and are presented as part of your staff report. And there was also a feedback survey that was sent to all the attendees of all the meetings. As a result of the outreach program, this kind of gives you a summary of the votes that we got back. The top vote measure was energy. Transportation, adaptation, municipal operations, and water and waste, that was kind of the order in terms of the number of votes. The top three measures that received votes were CCE program, community choice energy, tree planting and urban forests, increasing the city's urban forests, and a position, staff position to implement the Climate Action Plan. There were a number of organizations that were represented in the meetings, which are listed here. There were also a number of letters that some of the organizations wrote in support of the cap efforts, which were included in your packet in the correspondence section. Sandag has hired a couple of consultants to help us prepare the report and provide technical assistance, which are here tonight. Those are Ascent and Epic. And Sandag staff has also assisted, as well as the city received a grant from SDG&E to hire Rincon consultants to also help us internally. So we've had a lot of assistance at the staff level. A number of different questions were asked during the meetings. These are some examples of what we got. When will the cap be implemented? How often is it updated? How will the city keep the public aware of what's happening? Will environmental justice and social equity be addressed? These are all questions and answers that are included in the FAQ document that's online. I'm happy to answer any of those tonight for the council as well. We also got a number of write-in suggestions as part of the process. Those included complete streets, safety, pedestrian safety, active transportation recommendations, cap awareness campaign, or some kind of educational campaign that we can provide for the public and the schools, and creating an internal team or committee that's committed to implementing the cap. So in our feedback portion, we had a lot of success with the outreach program. We felt like we got good feedback from the public that we connected to. There was a lot of support for the community interaction that we had, especially in Spanish translation that we don't always provide, so we got a lot of positive feedback for that. The most requested, I would say, item was to provide more information to the public on what we're doing as far as implementing the cap and keeping them updated as to how we move along and what we're doing on a monthly or yearly basis. The next steps will be drafting the document, which we expect to happen over the next several months. We're hoping by the end of the year, we'll have a draft for public review, and we'll be coming back to the Planning Commission and the council with a public process to adopt the document. We are going to have to do a fairly thorough review of the measures, and because of the extent of reductions that we have to achieve, I'm guessing that we'll probably be back in front of the council to discuss some of those measures in more detail and get some more direction, because I feel like we're probably going to have some pretty hard decisions to make. So the staff recommendations at this point are to evaluate the measures on a cost-benefit basis and report back to the city council as needed, as I just mentioned, and to continue to work with Vista Unified School District and other outside agencies to maximize the benefits for the community and receive credit for our cap. And that completes my staff presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. So, Council, we have about 27 speakers here. So do you want to hear the speakers first? It's about an hour and a half of testimony, so...
Question.
You have questions? Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. So the last slide, you mentioned, you know... So the last slide, you mentioned, you know, working with VUSD and some of the other organizations. How does that work into our cap plan? And, I mean, what VUSD does or doesn't do, how does that affect us?
So because VUSD doesn't have their own plan, we are able to take advantage of any of the reductions that they generate from their own activities or facilities. So they have a program that was grant-funded by the state to implement solar photovoltaic panels on all their schools within the district, I think it's 20 some schools, which will create a significant reduction in electricity usage. And so since they don't have their own plan, we're going to take advantage of that reduction in our plan.
We could actually benefit from some of the changes.
Any of those outside organizations that are doing projects like that, that we can take advantage of that don't have their own plan, we're seeking for Vista.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have any other questions? Okay, Seán, Councilor Green, no? Okay. So Seán, and then we'll go ahead with the speakers. And what I'll do is I'll call, I'll call three names. If one will come hit the speaker, and then the other two will stand over on the side, it'll make it a lot quicker. And also, if you have something new to say, that we want to hear it. If you have something, you're going to, you know, just try not to repeat what the previous speaker or other speakers have said, you know, to repeat it over and over, just kind of say you agree or ditto or something, that would be helpful too, because we have like an hour and a half of speakers here that are sitting here. So with that, we will get started. And with, the first one is Brian Morales, followed by Addie Woodard, followed by Lisa Wellens.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Brian Morales. I'm a resident here at Vista. I'm also a business owner that's located here in Vista. First of all, I would like to take this time to commend Director John Connolly on such a successful initiative to include the community in this program design. He truly is a great asset to our city, so thank you very much. I feel this update is very timely, given the latest state report on climate, climate action, climate report. But the city of Vista cap program does more than benefit the environment. It also benefits our economy and our businesses. ProCal Lighting has been involved in cap programs with other municipalities, and I think a common theme that develops is a focus on renewables or community gardens and things like that. But what we try to advise the different municipalities is they need to focus on their current infrastructure. So one of the things that we discuss with them is looking at outdated units or lighting that we can update to be more energy efficient. In that, we create a better system that when we do go into a power generation or thing, looking at a micro grids or something like that, we get the bigger bang for our buck because we're producing more but using less. My second suggestion with this is to look at all these measures together. I think looking at them individually can create disorder, and so be able to, community having these together would be able to create a compounding value to the city and its efforts to fulfill its goals. So in closing, I'm very excited to see our city move forward to these green initiatives, both as a resident and a business owner. And again, would like to thank the community development staff and the resource agencies in helping us to get to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to take Lisa first, because she has to leave at 6:30, and that, we're almost there, so then I'll take. So it's Lisa Wellens, followed by Addie Woodard, followed by James Wang.
I appreciate it. That was a close call there. My name's Lisa Wellens. I live at 410 Alvarado Terrace, right here near the downtown area of Vista. There are a lot of great measures that are possible, but I just want to highlight a few. Community choice aggregation and reaching 100% energy goal, and we'll be able to do that faster. I think SDG&E's estimate was 50% by 2035, and with CCE, we can, we can go higher. This will also produce stable rates for our residents, because we all want predictability in our rates. And the potential revenues from CCA will assist, can assist with other measures in our cap, job programs, electrification of transit. These are just an example of a few, and this is already happening in cities like Richmond and Lancaster, that transportation measures, and we just saw the presentation from Sandag. And so, and we also saw that greenhouse gas emissions, like half of those here in Vista are from transportation. So it would be great if we can imagine what Vista could be with more transportation choices, including better, more active, better, more attractive infrastructure. Improvements like these make cities more desirable. If we ignore the need for more options, biking, walking, transit, we could end up with a city that has become overbuilt for cars instead of a city that is vibrant with options. This doesn't mean that Vistaans would be forced to give up cars, but would have the choice if they want to, they could have more disposable income to spend elsewhere in the city. Implementation of the cap, dedicated staff, a public commission, environmental commission, open and transparent process. And I support reaching those state targets that we saw on the graph up there. And I encourage all of you to be really proactive on this. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Addie Woodard, followed by James Wang, followed by Nancy Oshley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am so happy to be back on behalf of SDG&E to congratulate, or encourage what's going on right now. It's really exciting and a big undertaking, and John, I know, has been working hard on your Climate Action Plan. We want to continue to be your partner. We have a number of programs that I've spoken about before that help the city reduce its emissions. We are at 40, about 45% renewable energy. That does include rooftop solar, and that has, and we have no coal in our portfolio. So that's something we're really proud of, as we work to be the cleanest, safest, and most reliable utility in America. We also have a number of initiatives that we've been working on in the clean transportation front, to electrify our local highways, our Power Your Drive program to install charging in places of business and multifamily unit dwellings. We also are working on a few different filings right now to electrify medium-duty and heavy-duty vehicles like buses. And we also have, we're working on another filing to, we've submitted another filing to install charging at state parks and beaches as well as educational institutions. We're also, we also have a robust advanced technologies program. One of the things we're also proud of is we have one of the largest, we have the largest lithium-ion battery in North America. It's 30 megawatts, and it's actually an Escondido. And that's allows us to really harness that renewable energy that's coming onto our grid. We also have our EcoChoice and EcoShare programs as well, which allow customers to enroll in higher renewables. So please continue to utilize us as a partner. I'm here to help answer any questions and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. Okay, is James Wang? Okay, James Wang, followed by Nancy Oshley, followed by Sorako Ramirez.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for updating your Climate Action Plan, because as you know, climate is a worldwide problem, and we all have to do our part. I know some people may say, "Well, it's a worldwide problem, so what can one small city do?" But think of it this way also, that every city helped get us where we are, and every city can help solve us, solve getting us out of it too. So thank you for doing your part here. Now, I'm asking you to update your Climate Action Plan and to aim high and make it meaningful. So I know you may be concerned about the cost of implementing this plan, but I also ask you to consider the cost of not implementing a plan, because that's deferred maintenance. So it's like, it's like the oil light coming on in your car, you know? Like, you can ignore it, or you can put black tape over it, but I submit that that black tape will end up costing you a lot more than not taking care of it in the first place. So think of these wildfires and the droughts and hurricanes as that oil light coming on. So please don't use that black tape. So that being said, aiming high, then I want to say that climate, Community Choice Energy, CCE, is the quickest, easiest, and most cost-effective way of reducing your CO2 emissions. So you probably know that four North County cities recently completed a feasibility study on CCE, and that was very encouraging. So it showed that rates would go down by about 2% while saving hundreds of thousands of tons of CO2 annually. And this is not that much different than these coastal cities, so you could do the same thing. It's not too late to do that. And as far as what your man, John Connolly, is saying, CCE has the best cost-benefit of all these measures. By the way, I also have to compliment your staff, especially John Connolly, for his update procedure and all his public outreach, making your CAP sequel qualified. That's really important. Tiering, just tiering alone will save your, your development quite a bit of money. So during the choice of, the case of Encinitas, you know, we were able to put 100% clean energy in our Climate Action Plan largely because of CCE. And CCE comprises about 2/3 of our savings by 2035. Vista could do the same. And because of that, our CAP was awarded a Gold Star rating. So I urge you to please consider CCE. It's the most cost-effective way. It's never been cheaper and easier. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Nancy Oshley, followed by Sorako Ramirez, followed by Peola Illescas.
Good evening, members of the city council and mayor. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm a resident of Vista. I live on Alta Vista 30 years now, and I work with the local group, VCAP. I think you've maybe heard of us from John's presentation. We've been gathering signatures from businesses out in the community that show support for a good Climate Action Plan. We, we actually got signatures from 24 businesses in just a relatively short time, and I'll give those to staff before I leave. So I just personally just wanted to say, there are two things that I think are most important about the measures, that we make sure that are in our final plan. That being number one, that we have a staff person that can implement it, because the plan will go nowhere if you don't have support of somebody keeping their eye on the ball, moving things forward, and, you know, it really is a full-time job. The second part is, again, Community Choice Energy, just like what Jim said and what Lisa said, so I'm just going to tack on that. I thirded that. And another, oh, we also gathered signatures from community individuals, and I have a whole bunch of them right here, that support a green cap. And then these are all individuals that support Community Choice Energy, so I'll also give those to staff. And then a friend of mine who couldn't be here tonight asked if I would submit an article, and I'll just give you the title, "Catastrophe for California: Seen If Climate Change Goes Unchecked." So it's a very short article, but I attached to it a summary of the report that basically they got their information from, from the Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Assessment. So it has a lot of really good information. It's very current, so I'll also give that to staff. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorako Ramirez, followed by Peola Illescas, followed by Angelina Cruz.
Mi nombre es Socorro Ramirez. He's sido voluntaria con Poder Popular, que es parte de Vista Community Clinic, por seis años. Soy parte del grupo de personas y organizaciones que están trabajando junto para lograr una ciudad de vista más saludable. Este, este grupo es formalmente conocido como la coalición Healthy City, Healthy Resident.
My name is Socorro Ramirez, and I am a volunteer with Poder Popular, which is part of the Vista Community Clinic for six years. I am, I participate with a group of people and organizations that are working together to help the city of Vista be more healthy. This group is formally known as Coalición Healthy Cities, Healthy Residents.
Estamos aquí porque hemos decidido enfocar nuestra atención en el plan de acción climática, o CAP, por sus siglas en inglés, que identifica soluciones para abordar problemas relacionados con las emisiones y la contaminación.
Okay, we, we are here because we have decided to focus our attention on the Climate Action Plan that is identifying solutions to problems related to emissions and pollution.
Sin embargo, creemos que el CAP también brinda oportunidades para mejorar la seguridad vial, la transportación activa, la calidad de alimentos, y los espacios públicos.
However, we believe that the cap will also give us the opportunity to improve our, the safety of our transportation, our active transportation, and the quality of our food and our public spaces.
Además, el CAP también puede ayudar a abordar problemas relacionados a enfermedades debidas parcialmente a la falta de actividad física tal como es la diabetes.
Also, the cap will also help address problems related to sicknesses, because in doing part from lack of activity, physical activity, like diabetes.
Para poder expresar todas nuestras preocupaciones, esta noche mis compañeras presentarán distintas soluciones que hemos identificado en comunidad a través de muchas, muchas juntas, talleres y actividades, y que son muy importantes para nuestra comunidad.
So in order to express all of our concerns, tonight, a lot of my, my coworkers or group will be presenting different solutions that we have identified in the community through meetings and workshops and activities that are very important for our community.
Estas, estas están enfocadas en el transporte público, la salud pública, y la seguridad pública en general. Cabe señalar que más de 100 personas han participado en estos ejercicios, unos por muchos meses y algunos de nosotros por varios años. Muchas, muchas gracias por escucharnos.
So all these concerns have been focused on public transportation, on public health, and public safety in general. I would like to point out that 100 or more people have participated in these activities and this community outreach for various months, and some for various years. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Peola Illes, excuse, okay, we got a lot of people to go yet, so please refrain from clapping, all right? This is Peola Illescas, followed by Angelina Cruz, followed by Ashley Tetchy.
Hi, my name is Paola Illescas. I live in Vista on Calle Jules. I have lived also off South Melrose. During the cap community meetings, it was noted that the transportation-related pollution accounts for 49% of greenhouse gas emissions in the city of Vista, meaning that half of the pollution in our city is due to on-road transportation. We need better and more active, better and more active transportation options and infrastructure to help reduce this pollution that is produced by on-road transportation. So we do request the following things, and we really hope that you can hear them. One of them is to have basic public infrastructure, meaning ample sidewalks, visible crosswalks, traffic calming infrastructure, like trees, medians, lighting, and other amenities that need improvement. We would also like to have streets that are clean and are maintained regularly. It is important that it's perceived safe for many people who are vulnerable, that includes pedestrians, people who use bicycles, and frequent transit users. We also request that transit stops, bus stops, are complete with shading, with benches, so that way it can encourage people to use public transportation. All in all, if we have improved infrastructure, if we have clean and maintained streets and improved bus stops, we hope that folks can depend more on other options of active transportation rather than using vehicles. So hopefully, there's less cars, less pollution in the city of Vista. We request the city to comprehensively evaluate and improve accessibility to the most-used destinations, especially in lower communities and in places that are many folks who rent in apartments, houses. So we really hope you can take that in hand, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Angelina Cruz, followed by Ashley Tetchy, followed by Letitia Lopez.
Hola, mi nombre es Angelina Cruz. Soy voluntaria de Poder Popular y Vista Community Clínica por más de seis años. He's sido residente en Vista por 30 años y educa a personas sobre el cáncer de la piel.
Hi, my name is Angelina Cruz.
Hi, my name is Angelina Cruz. I am a volunteer for Poder Popular and Vista Community Clinic for more than six years. And I have been a resident of Vista for 30 years. And I have worked with people that have skin cancer.
Las siguientes son otras peticiones para nosotros como comunidad también son importantes. Solicitamos áreas con más árboles de vegetación en nuestra comunidad para combatir el calentamiento debido al cambio climático.
Following up some other requests that come from the community that are very important. We request areas with more trees and vegetation. And that in order for our community to fight against the global warming, due to global warming, the heat.
Las sombras de los árboles nos alientan a caminar más y usar el carro menos. Cuando estamos en las calles, en casa nos ayuda a ahorrar energía. Cuando usamos aire acondicionado debido al calor.
The shade that trees provide will encourage us to walk more and use our cars less. At home, it will help us save energy when we're not using our air conditioning because of the heat.
De manera general, las sombras de los árboles mejoran la calidad del aire que respiramos y también ayudan a que Vista sea un lugar placentero, saludable para vivir, trabajar, jugar. Estas acciones inclusive podrán atraer a más personas a visitar nuestra ciudad, lo que mejoraría nuestra economía.
So in general, the shade of the trees will improve the air quality that we breathe and will also make Vista a better place, a more attractive place to live in, to work, and to play. And all these things will attract people to visit our city and will improve our economy.
También solicitaba más lugares de recreación al aire libre para que nuestras familias tal como son los parques creemos que le den prioridad a la inversión de fondos para una campaña educativa y comprensiva alrededor del cambio climático. Igual inviertan más fondos para que haya un encargado de la implementación del plan. Muchas gracias por su atención esta noche.
Yes, we also are requesting that we want more recreational space for our families, like parks. We would like for you to give priority to allotting funds for a campaign, an educational campaign, to build awareness for climate change, for climate change awareness, and to invest more to have someone to implement the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ashley Tetchy followed by Letitia Lopez followed by Stephanie Martinez.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashley Tetchy. I have lived in Vista since 2003. I go to Vista High School, and I am a volunteer with Poder Popular. Lastly, we request the following. We would like you to conduct a study on the effects of climate change. The study should focus on the vulnerability of different socio-demographic factors such as income, age, education, and other factors across all the different communities in the city of Vista. We are making this request because climate change does not affect everyone equally. There are some people with better resources. To approach climate change and the city's plan should be equitable for and inclusive of low-income residents. We believe the needs to explore the establishment of a community choice energy program that would help reduce the costs of the energy and that would be clean for our personal health, for our city, and for the planet. Again, I would like to mention that these are community requests that we have prioritized as a group and not individually. In fact, I would like to ask the audience to stand up if you support the development and implementation of an equitable cap that includes our requests. Ahora la voy a decir en español. Todos aquellos que están en apoyo del desarrollo y implementación de un cap equitativo que incluyan nuestras peticiones, por favor, pónganse de pie. The next few speakers are other residents that will share some personal experiences. Please consider that many of us also struggle with similar situations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Letitia Lopez followed by Stephanie Martinez followed by Abdulla Diaz.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Letitia Lopez. Soy residente de Vista por más de ocho años. Mi familia y yo hemos sido residentes de Vista por más de hace ocho años. Tengo dos hijas, una de 15 años y la otra tiene 11 años. También tengo un hijo de dos años.
Good afternoon. My name is Letitia Lopez. My family and I have been a Vista residence for over eight years. I have two daughters, one that's 15 and the other 11. And I also have a son that's two years old.
Como madre, yo llevo a mis hijas a la escuela y a sus citas con el médico y al parque y entre otras responsabilidades para que ellos tengan un buen porvenir.
As a mother, I take my daughters to school. I take them to their medical appointments, to the park. And, you know, and that's on top of everything else I do for their well-being.
Como yo lo manejo, caminamos o dependemos del autobús como nuestro nuestro principal modo de transporte.
Since I don't drive, we either walk or we depend on the transportation, public transportation, as our main means of transportation.
Es por eso que hoy vengo a representar a todos aquellos que como yo necesitamos que nuestra ciudad mejore las banquetas y paradas de autobús.
So that is why I'm here today to represent all of us that need our city to improve the sidewalks and the bus stops.
En muchas ocasiones, me he dado cuenta que hay falta de banquetas en muchas partes de la ciudad. Cuando mi familia y yo caminamos, tenemos que arriesgar nuestra seguridad y caminar entre los carros que están estacionados y el tráfico.
Many times I have noticed that there is a lack of sidewalks in a lot of parts of the city. When my family and I walk together, we are risking our life. And we walk in between the cars that are parked and the traffic.
Mi familia y yo y los residentes de Vista merecemos caminar a la escuela y a nuestras citas médicas y al parque sin miedo de ser atropellados.
My family and I and the residents of Vista, we deserve to walk to school, to go to our doctor appointments and to the park without fear of being run over.
En cuanto a las paradas de autobús, necesitamos invertir recursos para poner cobertizos con sombra, luz, y bancas para poder transitar de manera segura y cómoda.
In respect to the bus stops, we need to invest money to provide shade, light, and a place to sit down in order to use these means of transportation in a more secure and comfortable way.
Yo he tenido que esperar hasta media hora en pleno sol o lluvia y sin lugar donde sentarme. Mis hijas usan el transporte público para llegar a la escuela, y quisiera que ellas tuvieran un lugar sombreado donde sentarse mientras esperan.
I've had to wait almost a half an hour underneath the hot sun or rain, and without anywhere to sit down. My daughters use public transportation to go to school, and I would like them to have a shaded area where they can sit and wait for the bus.
Quisiera recalcar que hay muchos más que experimentan lo mismo o peor que yo. Por ejemplo, las personas de la tercera edad y las personas con discapacidades. Les pido que tomen nuestras necesidades en cuenta y que trabajen juntos con los residentes del Grupo de Poder Popular y Coalición de Healthy Cities y Healthy Residents para una ciudad más sana y segura y próspera para todos.
I would like to emphasize that there are many more residents that are going through what I go through, and my daughters, and worse. For example, seniors and people with disabilities. I would like, I am requesting that you take in consideration our needs and that you work together for the residents of Vista, the Poder Popular Group, the Coalition of Healthy Cities and Healthy Residents, to have a city that is more secure and more healthy. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Me gustaría que se levantaran los de público si tienen las mismas necesidades que yo.
Please stand up if you have the same needs that I have just shared.
You know what? Can't do that. Stephanie Martinez followed by Abdulla Diaz followed by Georgina Nahera.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Martinez. I have been a Vista resident since 2010. This will be my first year in middle school. Since my school is about two miles away from home, I use the public transportation all the time. Within the first week of school, I noticed that there are many safety issues. First of all, crosswalks are not clearly marked, causing confusion. As a pedestrian, I question where it will be safe to cross without putting myself in danger. Second, vehicles do not respect the right of way to pedestrians. A lot of times, cars speed by not respecting the light signals. I've had multiple of experiences where my family and I are crossing the street and a car seems in front of us. One time, as we were walking, a car was speeding so fast that it was burning rubber while turning the corner, and it kept going without caring about our safety. Third, bus stops have no shelter, making the waiting time very inconvenient, especially during the summer when it is greater than 90 degrees. My idea is that the city should work with North County Transit District to build bus shelters with a couple of benches. There should be more trees because they will provide shade and also help the environment. Improving crosswalks, reinforcing traffic rules, and creating bus shelters are all good for people. If we make these changes, it will be easier for people to walk and ride buses, so less people will drive. If fewer people are driving, there will be less pollution. Less pollution means that the city will meet the goals in the Climate Action Plan. As a Vista resident, I ask you to work with us, Poder Popular, and with organizations like Vista Community Clinic to make necessary improvements for a healthier Vista. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Abdulla Diaz followed by Georgina Nahera followed by Luiz Villa Iana.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Abdulla Diaz, residente de Vista por 30 años. Soy voluntaria de Poder Popular y de Vista Community Clinic por más de seis años.
I'm doing the translation for Abdulla. Good evening. My name is Abdulla Diaz. I'm a resident of Vista for over 30 years, and I'm a volunteer with Poder Popular and Vista Community Clinic for over six years.
Se nos dio la oportunidad a mis compañeras y a mí para tomar un entrenamiento de ciudades y residentes saludables. Empezamos a ver las necesidades que había en torno a... A donde nosotros nos tocaba era el entorno de Townsend, donde hace falta banquetas.
So my colleagues and I had the opportunity to work on and attend a capacity called Healthy Cities, Healthy Residents. And we began to analyze the needs around our neighborhood concerning streets and the built environment.
Por falta de banquetas, uno tenía que bajarse a las calles porque los carros se parqueaban en doble fila a donde tenía uno que pasar. Exponiéndonos a un peligro de ser atropellados.
Because of a lack of sidewalks, we needed to often walk on the street, exposing ourselves to the high danger of getting run over.
Y en una de las caminatas que hicimos, se me dio la oportunidad de hablar con un miembro del concilio, con el señor John Aguilera, y les puse mi problema sobre mi calle, que ya tenía mucho tiempo. Yo miraba niños bajar a la escuela, porque allí hay dos escuelas cerca. Y pues teníamos que hacer todo lo posible, esperar que bajara un carro para poder subirnos, para poder pasar nosotros.
In one of the community assessment walks, I had the opportunity to speak with Councilmember John Aguilera about the importance of sidewalks. And because we've often seen a lot of kids have to step down and have to walk on the street, putting themselves in danger.
Y ahora puedo decir, gracias señor John Aguilera, señor Cole, porque se nos compuso la calle. Podemos caminar libremente sin ser atropellados.
And now I'm proud to say thanks to working with Councilmember Aguilera and Mr. John Connolly that we can walk safely in the neighborhood because of the temporary protected buffer.
Gracias por tomar su tiempo en escucharme. Espero que tomen en cuenta todo lo que dijeron mis compañeras y nos sigan apoyando a la comunidad.
Thank you for listening to me. I hope you take into consideration all of our suggestions tonight and that you keep continuing showing your support for the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Georgina Nahera. Is she here? Luiz Villa Iana and Lorna Leghart. Is Georgina here?
Yes.
Are you Georgina? Okay.
Buenas tardes.
You're followed by Luiz. Is Luiz here? Villa Iana? She's left? Oh, okay. What about Lana Leghart? Is she here? Okay. Followed by Sophie Wolfram. So sorry, go ahead, Georgina.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Georgina Nahera. Soy estudiante de Universidad Popular.
Hello, my name is Georgina Nahera, and I am a student of Universidad Popular.
Y represento a mi comunidad.
And I represent my community.
Hoy quiero hablar diciendo, para empezar, que es apoyo al Plan de Acción al Medio Ambiente.
Today, I would like to express my support for the Climate Action Plan.
Después de haber escuchado todos los comentarios de mis compañeros, quiero agregar algo más que no se ha mencionado.
After hearing all the comments my friends or my colleagues made, I would like to add one more thing.
Se ha hablado del transporte, la contaminación del transporte, de la electricidad, pero no se ha mencionado la contaminación de las industrias, la regular, regular los contaminantes de las industrias que provocan.
What has not been talked about is the pollution that transportation is creating, about the pollution of electricity and the pollution that is generated by our plants and our businesses.
También regular la contaminación de agricultura, todos los pesticidas que se usan en ellos, en las comidas, que van en el agua. Se contamina la tierra. Todo eso no se ha hablado. Se habla más del oxígeno, pero no se habla del agua, de la tierra, y también de la fauna.
Okay, la fauna, okay. We haven't spoke, we need to regulate the agricultural pollution that is creating, is polluting our earth and our fauna. We've only talked about the pollution in our air or the oxygen.
También, incluyendo la fauna que vienen siendo nuestros animales, las aves. Donde se terminen las aves, se acaba la polinización. Ellos son los que se encargan de eso.
We don't take care of our animals, our birds. We're pollination, they're the ones responsible for pollination. If we don't take care of that...
Por eso ahora la tierra, la naturaleza nos reclama lo que les hemos quitado. Nosotros no le hemos dado nada.
That is why nature is blaming us now for what we have not given it.
Por eso ahora nos quejamos de todo lo que estamos viviendo. Todos somos responsables de todo. Todos somos responsables de todo esto que está pasando. Todos hemos contribuido a la destrucción de la naturaleza. Ahora pues...
We are all complaining now about all these problems, but we're the ones that contributed to these problems, and now we have to take action.
Pues ahora hay que ser responsables para devolverle lo que le hemos quitado a nosotros. Como educándonos, educar a los residentes, componiendo las vecindades para que haya una mejor, para mirar mejor rendimiento. Trabajar con las ciudades vecinas, porque si no esto no va a funcionar. Nomás tratando ciertas áreas.
So, now we have to take responsibility in, in order to, to address this problem. We have to educate ourselves, educate our residents. We have to begin by fixing our neighborhoods, working with our neighborhood cities.
Volviendo a la fauna, he estado observando las aves. Les ponen hasta clavos en los postes. Ellos se pudieron adaptar a nuestra vida, a nuestra forma de vivir, pero nosotros no nos hemos podido adaptar a ellos cuando nosotros le quitamos su hábitat a ellos. Entonces, también hay que solucionar eso, hacer santuarios para ellos. Es necesario buscar soluciones en todas las áreas que está afectando a la naturaleza.
It's very important that we find solutions for the destruction of our, of our fauna and our habitats, our birds. Um, there's even nails put in the posts, and they have adapted to us, but we haven't adapted to them. We should build sanctuaries and have solutions to preserve them.
Para Universidad Popular es muy importante este tema, y hemos estado hablando cómo buscar soluciones y presentárselas a ustedes. Porque también estamos interesados en que haya una mejoría en todo esto.
And us, um, the Universidad Popular, we have been very concerned about these issues, and we have been discussing it thoroughly, and we would like to present it to you so that you take it into consideration.
Eso es todo. Gracias.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Here Lana Leghart, followed by Sophie Wolfram, followed by Don Feick.
Thanks for your patience for all of us this evening. My name is Lana Leghart. I'm a Vista resident, Mission Vista High parent, and I am the one and only parent representative on Vista Unified's Transportation Committee. So, I am here tonight to highlight the importance of reducing greenhouse gas, greenhouse gases and to make a connection between school transportation and Vista's Community Action Plan. You've heard a little bit about it before, but I'd like to give three suggestions, and here's why. Since busing to and from schools has been cut by the school district, parents have picked up the slack, and that has put thousands more vehicles on our streets. And I think that contributes a lot to the forty-nine percent that we are seeing on that pie chart. Um, it's increasing our fossil fuel use as well, and I don't blame parents for this. What I see is we have a culture in this city of driving. We don't have a culture of using public transportation, walking, and using bikes. I think we need to make a culture change, and in order to do this, the Vista Action Plan offers the perfect opportunity to get cars off-road. So specifically, I support these three things. Working with North County Transit District to ensure that every Vista Unified school has a bus route going to that school. As I mentioned, I'm a Mission Vista parent. That school's outside of Oceanside, so we have an extra challenge. We have to work with Oceanside as well to make sure that that happens. We have other schools in Oceanside, but we have to make sure every school can be reached by a bus. We need to continue adding those great sidewalks so that every student who can walk to school is able to do that safely, and we don't have reports of kids playing chicken with cars on their way to and from school. And third, we need to protect the bike lanes that we already have and expand our safe bike routes. So with those three steps and the ones that you have already heard, I believe that the city of Vista can begin to shift the culture away from cars and toward public transportation, walking, and biking. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophie Wolfram, followed by Don Feick, followed by Anne Force.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sophie Wolfram. I work with Climate Action Campaign, which is a nonprofit advocacy organization working to stop climate change and improve quality of life in the region through policy action at the local level. We have been involved in the development and implementation of every climate action plan in the region since 2015, and since that time, every city in the region that's adopted a climate action plan has included a target of one-hundred percent clean energy with community choice as the key strategy to get there. This cap update presents an exciting opportunity for Vista to incorporate best practices that have been adopted by cities throughout the San Diego region that are good for the economy and good for families. We submitted a letter in July that should be in your packets tonight outlining our recommendations for Vista's cap update, and we've participated in the public outreach process, which has been excellent and continue, will plan to continue to do so. I was going to kind of walk briefly through our recommendations that were outlined in the letter, but many of them have been covered tonight, so I'll just point back to the ones that I'd like to echo that residents have brought forward to you. One-hundred percent clean energy with community choice, safe, accessible, affordable biking, walking, and transit opportunities, increased tree canopy coverage, and equitable implementation that prioritizes low-income communities of color, including renters and transit-dependent residents. I also want to highlight that because the city's intention is to use the cap for tiering under CEQA guidelines, the cap must impose enforceable requirements and measures with defined performance standards. For the measures to be meaningfully enforceable, that means they need to be specific, evidence-based, and contain mandatory requirements. When done well, the city's cap can bring revenue into the city and save families and businesses money through community choice. It can help lead to safer streets, more kids and families safely walking and biking together to school, and economic development opportunities for the local workforce. The strategies that we and many community members tonight have recommended have many benefits. They're good for cities and the environment, and we need to support our economy, public health, public safety, and the environment. And we can use the Climate Action Plan as a tool to identify and leverage synergies among all of those goals. As cap development proceeds, we look forward to discussing further with each of you how this cap can help Vista meet its many goals in multiple arenas while also leaving a lighter footprint on our shared planet.
Thank you. Thank you. Don Feick, followed by Anne Force, followed by Cindy Oduaman.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Don, and I'm a local resident. Uh, when my wife and I moved here, I was surprised to learn that Vista had a cap but wasn't doing much with it. The city has a responsibility to act in favor of its residents, environment, and local economy. The cap is not a political document. It is a common-sense plan that addresses the safeguarding of our well-being. Recently, my daughter reminded me that today's decisions will have far-reaching impacts and that your children, and she, will still be here managing the consequences of our actions, or worse, our inactions. It takes a lot to be a leading agency, but it doesn't, it doesn't take a lot to follow suit and implement a climate action plan. As residents, we don't want to see Vista left behind by our peers who are proactive instead of reactive. So let's move forward on this plan. I want to thank the city staff for their outreach efforts. John and the consultants have done a great job by giving residents a space to share their opinions about the cap update. We appreciate the inclusionary efforts to engage all stakeholders, especially in speaking with the chamber and businesses, and also providing translated presentations and materials for the large percent of city residents that speak Spanish. You were given the community survey results and the feedback collected by staff. I hope that you read that material because, as you'll see, the second most voted-for measure is creating a staff position, position, or team to make positive change possible. As the elected voice for Vista, you've approved a climate action plan. Now we'll, we'd like to see you put that plan in motion. Please take action. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anne Force, followed by Cindy Oduaman, followed by Katsuko Fukuyama.
I want to thank the Vista City staff for preparing and explaining this extensive climate action plan. I read the downtown development plan recently, and so many of the things that are in the climate action plan are already in the downtown development plan, like shade structures, solar shade structures, sidewalks, bicycle lanes. Um, the, the Community Choice Energy Program can create a solar energy infrastructure that will benefit generations to come, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Cindy Oduaman, followed by Katsuya Fukuyama, followed by Martha Alvarado.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today. I'd like to extend my thanks to John Connolly and Elektra Feick Data for providing us with such informative workshops regarding climate action. I was so excited to learn that in the long term, the Climate Action Plan can be used as a tool to achieve many of the community goals, such as lowering energy costs, reducing air pollution, supporting local green jobs, and mostly improving our health and quality of life. Today, I am here to request that we commit to reach one-hundred percent clean energy by 2035, which is possible with community choice, community choice energy implementation. And, um, you have many models to follow, from the, uh, from the original Marin County Energy Model to, um, which was launched in 2010, and to Salona Beach Model, which was implemented only this year, and I heard nothing but wonderful things that they're achieving. Also, I urge that council allocate some funding for full-time staff who will be responsible for implementation of the Climate Action Plan. Lastly, I encourage you to, I encourage the council and staff to, um, to do research and perhaps go to this Community Choice Forum hosted by UC San Diego on the seventh of September. And lastly, I'd like to caution that you avoid getting information from Clear the Air Coalition or the Sempra Service because they are the lobbying arms of the Sempra Energy. Thank you very much.
Katsuya, followed by Martha Alvarado, followed by Rebecca Medici.
Good evening. My name is Katsuya Fukuyama. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. A San Diego-based organization called Climate Action Campaign has a simple mission: Stop Climate Change. Recently, they published a scorecard on the cities and placed them into one of the four groups depending on the scores they received. They evaluated the cities in nine different categories. Maximum score in these categories are five to twenty points. The highest total score is one hundred. So if you get the ninety, you get A. So I'd like to list some cities in these four groups. Group one, named Gold, City of San Diego with ninety-eight points. Group two, named Bronze, Del Mar, seventy-three points, San Marcos, seventy points, and Carlsbad, sixty-four points. Group three, named Participation Acknowledgement, National City with fifty-two points. What about Vista? Where is it? We scored forty-seven. We are in a group four, the bottom of the group, called Needs Improvement. Well, Vista did well in a few categories. We received a ten-point maximum in cap adopted and legally binding. That's great! But where did we score lower? I picked three major categories. One, state greenhouse gas target. We scored two out of ten. Second, equity and jobs, zero out of ten. The last one, third, in the clean energy, we scored one out of twenty, not a ten, twenty. This one makes a huge impact for, on the two items above. Without implementation of community choice energy, the score will stay this low, would be in the bottom group. I understand at least two council members received a donation from Sempra Energy, the parent company of SDGE, which is vigorously campaigning against community choice energy. I hope the council reviews the plan carefully and is not going to be influenced by the giant-for-profit energy company. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Alvarado, followed by Rebecca Medici, followed by Mary Gilman.
Good evening. My name is Martha Alvarado, and I will be sworn in as a Vista School Board trustee in December. Tonight, I'm here to support additions and improvements to the Climate Action Plan and advocate for the students of VUSD. First, I'd like to thank you all and the staff for the positive steps that have been implemented in the past, but there are more improvements that are necessary. I'll keep my recommendations short. First, I'd like, I'd like the plan to include community choice energy. Doing so will reduce the cost of energy for VUSD and allow us to reallocate those funds to be used directly in the classroom with students. Second, I would ask that we improve the neighborhoods, lacking safe sidewalks and paths to improve the walkability and improve health, overall health. Last, I'd like to ask for a tree canopy to be included in the Climate Action Plan and ask for those trees to be planted in all areas, but especially District One, where kids are disproportionately affected by asthma and other respiratory problems, because when students are healthier, they come to school and they maximize their learning. So those trees are very important to the students. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Rebecca Medici, followed by Mary Gilman, followed by Devon Stewart.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Medici. I'm a Vista resident, live in District One. Um, first, I'd just like to thank John Connolly and staff. They've done an amazing job with all of this, and I think it would be great to hire another person to help out and actually, you know, do the Climate Action Plan. That's important. And people covered most everything that I'm interested in so far, especially the CCE, the, the canopies, and especially the tree canopies and bus stops that have covers, walkable streets. Those are all really important, especially in District One. And I also would like to bring up a couple of other things which involve green jobs, which I don't think was covered that much, and I think it's important that the cap should include a green jobs section that provides data regarding quantity and quality of jobs. The green economy should provide good, good-paying, middle-class jobs that lift up the working families, and I think that will really help Vista. And I think especially should try to hire people from Vista who were, you know, a lot of construction people, maybe out of work, maybe, you know, doing solar and everything. That would be a great, you know, help to Vista, and, and I think that you could all get behind that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Gilman, followed by Devon Stewart, followed by Joshua Tienda.
Hi, my name is Mary Gilman. I live in District Two, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I'm very impressed with the outpouring of attendance and all the community involvement. I know this, developing this plan and this update was a big effort, and I do appreciate the time and effort involved. So I would like to express support of a few of the measures that I see in the, in the cap that I would hope would get a little more attention. And those are A4 about the diversity and habitat and the effort to preserve open areas for... habitat and plant diversity. And there are not many areas left in the city that do have such, such diversity, but I would like to see those preserved. The other one is E5, and other people have mentioned that, about tree planting and, you know, having more urban forests. And these are areas where, of course, we are able to plant trees, which, which of course remove carbon dioxide, which is a significant source of greenhouse gas emissions. And the intent is that it would also reduce the surface temperatures that contribute to climate change. So those, in combination with two other measures, the one is the Smart Growth, T4. And of course, the idea here is that, that development should be done around areas that are job centers and transportation centers and city facilities where there's the greatest density. And the idea is by doing that, we can reduce the congestion and reduce the loss of open spaces. So these are all kind of related measures. So my concern is that this, this, the growth that is taking place in Vista at every corner throughout the city, that, that there's not enough consideration to protecting our areas, our wild areas, our open areas, our open lots, that again, have always given Vista the rural, rural atmosphere. And by doing this, as far as the growth in the city and all the development projects that are pending and have been approved, that we're losing the feeling for this rural area. And the, the Smart Growth is one of the subsets to the transportation. And the greatest contribution to greenhouse gases is on-road transportation.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Devon Stewart, followed by Joshua Tienda, followed by Sharon Albus...
She left.
Okay. Sharon.
Hello, and thank you, members of the council and mayor, for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Devon Stewart, and I've been a Vista resident for a total of 20 years. As both a constituent and a community member, I wish to make a statement to the importance of the climate action plan and its implementation. We've heard a lot this evening, and I just want to reiterate that the cap is not a feel-good plan. I feel that it's a tried-and-true strategy that addresses the social, economic, and environmental strains that we currently face. As a millennial who supports a more conservative agenda, I wish to note that the cap is not a catch-all solution for our challenges. It is in motion to use better judgment on common sense issues like climate change. It's my hope that the council and mayor take note of the growing support behind these plans and projects, and with such awareness, move forward to actively pursuing their aims. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Tienda, followed by Sharon.
Hello, council members, mayor. My name is Joshua Tienda. I've been a resident for, for over 28 years. And I think there's one person that wasn't addressed. We all talk, there's a lot of talk about the color culture, get people out to walk, get people to, to public transportation. And as a, as a more libertarian, I, I, I found that tastes really nanny state, but, but I could agree with something with, of the climate action plan, is that, and that the CCE, which is the, the Community Choice Energy, because I don't like monopolies, and I think SEAG is a monopoly, they should be more, I'm thinking of the individual, individuals should have more consumer choice on where the energy, they buy their energy. So in that sense, in that more libertarian sense, in that, looking for the individual choice, I would support the CCE. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I say Sharon left? Sharon, I'll say, is Albus Stigui? Did she leave? Okay. And then I have, actually, I think six or seven people here that asked, they turned in their speaker slips, so they didn't, didn't wish to speak. So do I need to do other names? No, okay. What is your name? Matthew? Just a minute, I'm looking, I'm looking to see if I have it here. Oh, okay. On this item, so. Matthew Menke, you're the last speaker on this item.
I'm a simple man, and I have a sixth-grade education, so I might not have filled out that form properly. But there are a few terms that I've heard tonight that confuse me, and I'm not looking for any hostility, but I embrace climate change. I didn't finish school, but in the short period I was there, I learned enough about history that when you look at the hundreds and thousands and 10,000s, climate change is natural. It's a natural effect. There's a new study out that just, and I can't cite the source, but I'd be more than happy to give you my number, gladly share it with you. I'll go home and study it and give you the source. But it says that one volcano equals what man has done to this earth as far as climate change and greenhouse gases since the beginning of the industrial age. So, everybody has their own opinions, but there are scientists that do studies. Anybody that thinks that they're going to stop climate change should loosen up a little bit and embrace it. What we can do is we can assist Mother Earth. One of the things that I, I'm first-generation Vista. I came here because Vista welcomes disabled children. You guys, I have to thank each and every one of you, because each and every one of you continue to put forth a strong foot in helping the disabled children in this community. And I, I think you guys all know that my son's disabled. I'd like to bring something else to your attention, though. And I asked Kim about it before she left, but there's something called PM10, particulate management, and SWEPS, and I know you guys are familiar with it. What I'm curious about is if you have an enforcement team, because it's federally mandated, state enforced, and it rolls down to the cities, the county, and then the city, and then the city will violate the contractor, contractor will go bankrupt, city stuck with the bill. The city of Escondido was violated at $155 million. So the 17.9876432 million sounds great until you get hit with what the Port of San Diego got hit with, $55 million violation. And so I'm curious if you have an enforcement team for particulate management, PM10, and SWEPS. You may not be able to answer that question for me right now. And I know what Kim said, well, she brushed it off, and she said, "That's up to the contractors." But it, it directly comes back to the city. I love the city of Vista. I do not want to see the city of Vista bankrupt. And I can tell you, there's a lot of large construction sites here. I am a cardholder for SWEPS and for particulate management. I could walk on any job here and find 10 violations, which carry a weight of $10,000 per violation, times whenever the job began, and it bankrupts a city. If the, if the contractor goes under, the city has to absorb that. So if you guys could maybe get back to me on that, I'll be more than happy to talk to anybody about that. But I'm curious about that. I love the city of Vista, and thank you, guys, for all your work to do with the...
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes all of our speakers. So I guess we're, that we're supposed to provide direction to staff, so I don't know if any of you have any comments that you want to make to Councilmember Green. You look like you're ready to talk.
My direction would just be to follow staff's recommendation to come up with a plan that we can work on implementing. Also, let us know what the financial implications are of it and the different areas that we'll be implementing it. And thank you so much for working with the community and getting their feedback, and hopefully helping us make a really good decision and make a big impact on the climate moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
I just wanted to reiterate generally my belief in increasing our plantings of trees. I'm glad to see us formalize that here in the climate action plan. I think we need to be doing a lot more with regard to that. As I've often said, you know, it's going to take a generation for these trees to mature, and so we need to be planting them now. And so I'd really like to hear more about our plan on that and get more into that in some of our briefings, because I think that's, that's very important to me. And certainly interested, we've got a lot more depth to dive into here, and I look forward to doing that as we move forward.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you, Mr. Connolly, for this report. But I especially want to say thank you to everybody who came out here tonight to speak to us. I appreciate hearing everything that everyone has to say and all of your great comments. And I, I did want to ask Ms., is it Fukuyama? If you wouldn't mind staying afterward, I have a couple of questions for you regarding your comments. One or two of them were a bit concerning for me, so I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about that, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. I, I do like the idea of the trees, of course. And we've talked about that, and we're, we have in our general plan specific requirement for trees in our developments and things, so that we are working our way through that. So I appreciate that. And I wanted people to know that we are working on that. But we had a lot of people comment about buses and public transportation, which is something that we are working on with North County Transit. And I know that I myself have had questions and have called, and I've spoken with the deputy mayor, who's our representative on North County Transit, about some of these, these items. So I wanted, I wanted you all to know that these are things that we are talking about and that we are already in the process of working on. And as you know, we've already started building some of the sidewalks through the communities. We're making our way through the ones that we can. So I've heard people comment that our climate action plan is, is great on paper, but we're not doing anything to implement it. And, and I think that that's not really quite fair, because we really are working on some things to do that are in the climate action plan. But aside from them being in the climate action plan, they're just the right things to do for the community, that we need to work on for the community. So I would ask staff specifically to work more with North County Transit and talk about the bus, bus lines, the bus routes. And I think North County Transit and VUSD need to get together at the same table. And I don't know if they have a seat at the table for transit meetings. But a couple of the other issues that were brought up are actually school district issues, not issues for us. That's another set of five elected officials with a budget of their own, which is considerably more than the budget we have here. So I would like to see that this, we are Vista, we are all Vista, and this is going to have to be a community conversation more than just here at City Council. It has to be a community conversation with the VUSD and with North County Transit. And as somebody pointed out, our school district is partly in Oceanside, and so that's going to have part of their conversation. But you look at the flip side of that on the eastern edge of Vista, some of, some of our kids are in San Marcos School District. So it's, it's also a regional thing. So I, I would just encourage us to reach out and have these conversations with our neighbors, with our colleagues in the community, the school, North County Transit. And I do have another thing I'm going to be sending to the deputy mayor regarding another bus stop that we need help with here in Vista. But I, I wanted to let somebody know, this was handed out to us, and I don't remember who handed it out, regarding the Community Choice Forum at UCSD. This is already on our calendar. I, I know I'll be there, and I think a couple of our, my other, my colleagues will be there as well. So this is something that we're already looking at and we're doing. So, but I think you're, you're on the right track, and I thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, I actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with NCTD. We're going to be discussing shade, the cleanliness of some of the bus stops and that. And I will bring up the seating as well. So the shade is something I've been discussing, because John and I have done some tours of townsite area with Healthy Cities Group. And I recognize the fact that, you know, we have a lot of people waiting at the bus, and I think we'd have more people waiting if we had shade. But right now, they're sitting in the sun, so, and the rain, when we do get rain. So that's happening tomorrow morning. And then Thursday, I have a meeting with Vista Unified and their superintendent, and I'm bringing staff from NCTD to actually discuss the stop at Mission Vista High School. So thank you for bringing that up. I believe the lady that spoke is one of the ladies that sent me an email, so your message was heard, and we're having that meeting this week. I have a couple of questions. I heard someone say that this, the study by Encinitas and the coastal cities for the CCEs was done. That's not what I heard just the other day.
Yeah, I have not, I have not been told that it's complete. I know they are at a point where they've drafted it, but it's an internal review with the cities that all collaborated on it, and it's not being shared publicly yet, as far as I know.
Okay. So obviously, we're eagerly waiting...
We're waiting for that, yes. And we were planning to report back to the council on that when it's done.
Because I definitely would like to hear back on what these other cities have done and what they've found out, basically. That'd be useful in making decisions. So I also support the idea of the tree canopy. I think that would have many benefits. Couple that have obviously been mentioned this evening, but also just beautifying our city as well. I have a question, though, in regards to that. We have a botanical garden in our city that the city works with and helps out. In fact, we have a representative that represents the city on that botanical garden board, a liaison. Does that help or count as far as points for, for the cap at all? Very little?
Percentage. Overall, tree canopy for the city is what we look at, so that's just a very small percentage. We have a couple thousand locations on our public streets that have been removed and not replaced because of irrigation issues. So that's kind of our primary focus right now, is to get back to those street trees, and then we're going to be looking at the parks after that.
Okay. Great. And then I think a good point that was brought up as well was about the agriculture and the water. I know you and I discussed just the other day the fact that Vista has one of the most stringent water requirements, I guess, stormwater requirements. Is, how does that play into this?
Very little. It's a construction-related issue tied to the state's water permit that the San Diego region is in, but it's more related to new development and how you treat your water.
Or construction, not agriculture, then?
Correct.
Okay. And then I believe Mr. Menke, right? Matt brought up an issue, and I kind of made eye contact with you. It seemed like we were covered in that area.
Oh, you're talking about the SWIPs and the PM10?
Yeah.
Yeah, so those, that's dust particulate matter that is a part of a grading activity typically. The SWIP refers to Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. It's also related to construction sites. So he's referring to the regulations that pertain to active construction with respect to dust control and stormwater control. We have grading inspectors that are assigned to every construction site, and those are their responsibilities. So if there are complaints about dust or water quality, the construction inspector handles those on behalf of the city.
I was at a construction site this morning, as you were as well, and a couple of the council members, and I did notice that that was huge. There was a big sign there, phone number to contact, you know, if, if there's any dust. And while we were there, I was wearing this suit here, and I didn't get dusty. So I think they're doing their job there. That was good to see. I guess my last comment is to thank you, Mr. Connolly, and your staff on all the work that you've done. I do want to make people aware that we were the third city in the county to actually adopt a... a cap, and this is our second, our revision, basically, and that there's still three cities out there that have not adopted a plan yet. So we are looking to get better, and I appreciate all the people being here and voicing their opinions. Your opinions have been heard, and I've got my work cut out for me this week. Thank you for being here.
Councilmember Franklin.
Yeah, just a couple of more brief thoughts. On the plantings, we should try and do a better job of following up on landscape plans with people who own property, neighborhood associations, to make sure that they are maintaining the plantings. Do we get credit for those?
Yes.
Yeah, so we should, I don't know, what kind of enforcement do we have? Because I think there's a lot of people, they get their projects approved, and they, some of them stop irrigating, the landscaping dies, some of the associations have removed trees without adequate plans for replacement, and in my conversations with staff, they're required to be replaced and maintained. But I don't think that we've necessarily been enforcing that to the degree to which we should, and that probably should be a part of this plan, don't you think?
We largely enforce that for new development at the time of construction, and we release bonds a year after construction. Typically, it's in the first year that we regulate that. If someone removes the plantings after that timeframe, we typically regulate it only based on complaints. We don't frankly have the staff to go out to every site and make sure that, you know, all the landscaping's being maintained all the time.
Well, if we do get to the point where we're going to hire somebody additional, maybe that's something that we want to put on their agenda because, you know, there's only so many plantings that belong to the city. The vast majority of the plantings in the city are private property, and if we've authorized people's developments and they were supposed to maintain them, and some property owners aren't always good actors years later and they don't maintain them, then that would probably make a big difference, too, in the blight objective. So I think it's, there's a lot of different goals that we would be achieving there. The other thing I wanted to mention, the goal of building more sidewalks and bike lanes and lighting, which not only improves the safety, which is essential, and increases property values, but of course also further diminishes blight. And, you know, I always want to remind the city that all the sidewalks, you know, most of the sidewalks south of the 78 were built with special tax laid on property owners there and through the development of their properties. We have special districts that pay for lighting, landscaping, and do they maintain? I guess that district, the special districts, pay for any of the sidewalk maintenance?
No.
But all the property owners there did pay the cost of the sidewalks in their properties they were paid for by the developers. Does it make sense, and I've brought this idea before, but I just wonder in this context if there's more of an appetite to talk again about a special district to encompass a large area of the community that's underserved with sidewalks and lighting to, you know, and maybe it would be a popular idea, maybe it wouldn't, but, you know, that would be a ready means to come up with a plan to offer those things to the underserved, you know, areas of the city and to finance it. And it would certainly make a big difference in the, you know, in the appearance and the safety. So just something to think about.
I know that had been brought up in the past. One of the things that Mr. Conley and Mr. Mayor are doing right now is using the CDBG funds that we were using to fund capital improvements in the past. We've got about $500,000 per year. And so we're currently in a planning phase to look at all those areas that need sidewalks, and then hopefully over the next five, seven, eight years, try to replace a lot of those areas or include new sidewalks in areas that don't have them.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Councilman Franklin said on the landscaping. I'm just wondering, is that something we could include as part of our plan as well? The maintenance of landscape after the year?
We'll look into it.
That would be great. I'd be on board with that, 100%.
We can certainly evaluate that. I can't answer that right now.
Because that's something I've been talking to you guys about in a different way of handling it, but I think this might be a good way to do it as well.
Sure.
Good.
I've actually complained in the past when I've seen things die that I, you know, a project, after it'd been there a few years, and I knew that we required it, but then they just let it go. So I agree with that also. And I just make a couple remarks, and I agree with the trees. I think that we ought to plant some more trees, bit larger trees would be nice, you know, not little sticks, you know, even though, because it takes so many years for them to grow. But I agree with that canopy, if we could provide that in some areas. And even, it might be a good idea, buy a bus stop, you know, that if we planted a larger tree, it would get some shade there. So, and the CCE is under review, and I'm kind of waiting to, you know, on that, to hear what's with that. And one other thing is, I live right above a huge, Yosemite Creek, where there's huge construction going on. I mean, I can't tell you, there's got to be 12 machines going, and the water trucks are really good. They're just like watering that place all the time. They're always watering it down, so they're doing a good job on that one, I would say. So with that, do you have enough direction, or do you, okay, and then bring it back to us? Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, so with that, we will, thank you, John, you did a great job on that. It took a lot of work, so it looks good. And thank you to all the speakers who came today to talk about that. That was, we appreciate all your remarks. And with that, we will move on to our second discussion item, which is D2, which is our Palo Vista Drive Park conceptual plans. And our city manager, Patrick Johnson, is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Tony Winnie, who's our assistant to the city manager, who will be doing the presentation, and he's supported by our city engineer, Greg Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So I'm here tonight to present on the Palo Vista Park project. I'm going to provide a short overview of the park project to date, and then I'm going to turn it over to our design consultants, Andrew Reese and Stephanie Hatton with ASR Landscape Architects, to review, there we go, to review with you the conceptual designs that have been produced to date for the project and discuss their approach and how they went about designing the conceptual plans. ASR Landscape Design was chosen by the city to work with us on developing an appropriate design for the property that meets the needs of the community. They have worked on many park design projects in San Diego County, including projects with the city of San Diego, as well as private development projects, and we're glad to be partnering with them on this project as well. So a little bit of background first. Palo Vista Park is located along Civic Center Drive, near the intersection with Highway 78, and was previously occupied by three small homes. The next closest parks, city parks, are Breeze Hill Park in South Vista and the park here at Vista Civic Center. So the location was chosen initially in an effort to improve a major visual corridor to our city and to provide additional recreational opportunities for our residents in Central Vista. One of the city council's top priorities for the next two years, as you know, is to continue to build new parks and improve upon existing parks for the community. So the property was purchased in 2016, and the homes on site were removed to help reduce the visual blight, with the intention of building a new future park on the site. The site itself is approximately 0.9 acres total, and the current capital improvement budget for the project is $750,000. Here's a picture of the former apartment buildings that sat on the site. As I said, there were three of them that were demolished to make way for the future park site. Here you have an aerial view of the site that shows Civic Center Drive along the top and then Palo Vista curving down along the bottom. This picture shows those three apartment buildings, as I mentioned. And here's some different views of the existing property after demolition occurred. The first one is the view north from Palo Vista Drive looking towards Civic Center. The second picture is the northwest corner of the site, again, looking towards Civic Center. And then the third picture is a view of the site from the north corner, looking south along Civic Center. And here you have three additional views. The first one on the left is a view of the site from the northeast corner, looking south, and then the view from the north, looking towards Palo Vista Drive. And then the last picture, you can see a picture of the drainage channel that's existing along the eastern edge, which we'll be talking a little bit more about in the presentation. This is another view of the site, so you can get a better orientation of exactly the space that we're dealing with for our planning purposes. So when we partnered with our design consultants, we had a list of priorities that we provided to them before we did our outreach to the community. These are some of the parameters that we wanted to put in place to kind of help shape the conversation going forward. One is, obviously, we wanted to provide a gateway statement to the city with welcoming signage. Two, we wanted to provide additional recreational space for residents, and specifically with grass, that was one of the amenities that was desired. We wanted it to be safe and secure, obviously, as a public space. We wanted the landscaping to be drought tolerant and have efficient irrigation system. The existing sidewalks that are there, we wanted to make sure we connected with any new sidewalks that were constructed. We wanted to integrate public art into the project. The concrete drainage channel that is open currently, that I showed you in the picture before, we wanted to underground that as part of the project. And we'll be treating the stormwater that the site produces on site, so we will need to allocate space for that to occur. We also need to accommodate for the future widening of Civic Center Drive, so the plans are to widen Civic Center northbound to accommodate additional turn lane right there near the 76 station. And finally, we wanted to make the site accessible for those who have disabilities, according to ADA. So one of the questions that was brought up at one of our design workshops, which I'll talk about in a minute, was who are we serving by constructing this park? And here you see a map of the demographics within three-fourths of a mile of the park. So that's approximately 10,000 people within three-fourths of a mile. You can see that a heavy percentage of those folks are under the age 18, and there are some additional demographics, including the percentage of rental housing, their income, and then the demographic split. So public outreach, we held two public workshops in the month of March, on the 14th and the 24th, and we had about 20 participants per workshop. In addition to that, those two public workshops, staff did walk the neighborhoods surrounding the park and notified both businesses, churches, and anyone else who we encountered along the way, and we provided them with flyers for the workshops, both in English and Spanish. We, of course, utilized social media and our city's online newsletter to get the word out, and then we gathered input from the public on preferred amenities at those two workshops. In addition to the workshops, we received about 17 emails from the public that are also included in Exhibit 2 of your agenda report. Finally, we did present to the Parks and Recreation Commission on July 23, and they supported the Plan Option 2, which we'll be going over with you in just a minute. And after we made that presentation to Parks and Recreation Commission, the conceptual plans that you have before you tonight were posted on the city's website for the public to take a look at and provide feedback as well. So what sort of input do we receive from the public? Here is a list. We actually have two slides of all of the input we received, so I'll go through them real quick. Children's playgrounds and swing sets were a very popular item. Splash pad was another one that people requested. Passive use grass areas for recreation. We had a conversation about true grass versus fake grass, and overwhelmingly, the community wants real grass for the park. No active sports. Obviously, with the proximity to Civic Center Drive, that was a concern, which we second, so we certainly won't be allowing for active sports on site. Secure fencing, again, to prevent any conflict with those patronizing the park with the busy Civic Center Drive. Shade trees was also an item that was requested by quite a few individuals. Preserving the existing oak tree, there's one there on site that a number of folks wanted to make sure that we made an effort to save, and which we will, of course, do. Restrooms, art, parking, and community gardens are also items that were requested from the public. In addition to the previous slide, there was input that they also wanted to support our vision for a gateway to the city, and that included integrating public art and some appropriate signage to welcome people to the city of Vista. The ADA accessible walkways were also desired. A sidewalk that went around the perimeter of the park to accommodate those individuals who are, there's a lot of foot traffic that goes between the Sprinter Station and, you know, the apartment buildings around that area, so we wanted to make sure that we provided a sidewalk on the exterior of the park as well as sidewalks within. Lighting and security, obviously, were very important. Site furnishings, like tables, benches, and trash receptacles, the drought tolerant landscaping, and we discussed having the park open in the evenings until 8:00 p.m., similar to some of our other parks. So taking that list of the amenities desired from the public, we put together a draft project scope, which we wanted to share with you tonight. We were able to accommodate all of the items within those two conceptual plans that we're going to show you in just a second, with a few exceptions. So those plans, either one, include children's playgrounds and swing sets, the grass areas for recreation, there are no active sports planned, there will be a secure fence around the entire perimeter of the project, as well as perimeter sidewalks, lighting, security, shade trees, preserving that existing oak, including a singular public art piece, perhaps another kite, like we have in our existing program, some prominent signage to welcome people to the park and to the city, ADA accessible walkways, the site furnishings, the drought tolerant landscaping, and as I said, open in the evenings until 8:00 p.m. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our consultants with ASR Landscape Architecture, and they're going to talk to you a little bit about the two conceptual plans and how they went about developing those, so.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Councilmembers, I'm Andrew Reese with ASR Landscape Architecture. As always, it's a great honor and pleasure to be here to present this park options to you. Some privilege for us. Stephanie Hatton is also here, our project manager. As Tony has given you an overview, we had a quite extensive program, both from the city and from the public, and we combined all of those together and accommodated that on a very small plot of land, small area. So the first things that we did after we gathered all this information is we did a pretty thorough analysis of the site, looked at different opportunities and constraints, and then we start to develop a functional diagram, if you will, of how things start to circulate and work together with all of the program pieces, like a puzzle on the site. So both Option 1 and Option 2 that we're going to look at tonight are very similar because in a smaller site, certain pieces just work better in our mind professionally in certain areas, including some of the turf areas. So both plans have a circular area that we've accommodated in the larger section, and then we've used more narrow areas of the park for other program elements. So Option 1 that we're looking at here tonight, and every option that we look at has all the program elements in it. So as you can see from this option, we've lost about 10 feet along Civic Center Drive, and it reduces the park overall a little bit. So that's in the black and white, where you can see the old alignment, and then the new alignments are in color and graphic. So we have a perimeter sidewalk that goes all the way around the park for safety, security, and pedestrian inflow. And then around, or just in from this perimeter sidewalk, we have ornamental landscape that is envisioned to have some mounding and a fence, so it's a security perimeter fence. And then it would be gated at several main entries on different points around the park. And then as you get inside of the park, inside of the fence, on the left-hand side is the larger area where we've put our tot lots and our open recreational play larger area where we've put our tot lots and our open recreational play areas. And then as you move from left to right across the site, it moves into a more ornamental, more of a garden-esque type of walkway experience that leads out and provides connection out to the north. We also looked at different connections of existing sidewalks, retaining walls. We undergrounded the utilities, preserved the trees, and we're dealing with the stormwater management onsite in the areas to the right where it starts to get thinner into the park. So we've accommodated playgrounds, we've added some DG walkways, we've put in plenty of shade trees. I was very happy tonight to hear a lot of requests in the CAP program about, you know, local trees and adding more shade. We're always a big proponent. And then to provide kind of a core area with a playground for people to congregate and be in, and then more intimate areas off into the more garden-esque or ornamental type landscape to follow through. So different kind of experiences within the park, areas for families to picnic or to have their children play, and then more of kind of a garden-esque walk area off to the south as the project gets narrower and narrower and narrower. So Tony, go to the next one. So Option 2, the difference between this option and Option 1 is that we try to maximize the site out a little bit more. Option 1 was a little more restrictive and was really heavy on more of the ornamental, more of the garden-esque type of walkway experience with some more intimate space. Option 2 looked at really trying to increase the amount of turf area in the park for people to gather, but not to put it all in one giant lump area so that somebody might go in there and start doing active recreation. It was a creative way to look at maybe breaking up the space, providing multiple turf areas for people to do passive recreation. And then we had more areas for the actual tot lot and playground equipment. And then the other part of the circle that's still green is mounded area where we would consider naturalized play, where maybe you had fallen logs or boulders. It wouldn't be your scripted play like the two other areas that would have fall playground surfacing. And then there's a loop path and a walkway through and a connection out to the north and stormwater being held more in the ornamental area. So the difference really between this plan and the last plan is just trying to maximize more of the passive recreation with the turf area and increasing a little bit more of the playground and maybe the passive uses that you would consider in and around turf areas. So we've looked at parking, pedestrian circulation, how people enter the site, and just trying to provide them a little bit more room. Both projects or both options, you know, include signage, gating, gated entries, night lighting. Trying to think, the real big difference is basically the increased amount of passive turf area and playground equipment in this plan. So that's about it. So, oh, and then some of the ideas or information that we got back from the community as far as the theming of the park is they would really like to see more of a naturalized play equipment and things that weren't as much standardized. There was some interest in the unscripted play where you can let kids be kids, but this is one of the examples that we provided as far as what the more scripted, traditional play equipment would look like in a naturalized state. Tony, next one. Just kind of play features as examples. Keep going. Next one. And this was an example of some unscripted play where we used rubber ice, or this wasn't us, it was a project that used rubber ice surfacing in an artistic fashion where kids could still play and do creative things on it, but it wasn't considered a playground per se. It was more of a creative way of looking at doing something different. And then the idea of incorporating both options incorporated placement for art within the park. So we had left areas for art installment places, but we're also hoping to be creative even with the fencing that may be going around the perimeter and doing artistic site furnishings so that more of the park is considered artistic than just a placement of a sign. Some examples of some local signage, which we had on the left-hand side of the corner, we had proposed signage on both options. And then there was the idea or a request for shade with instant shade where we could put up shade structures above the tot lot area. And we've provided a lot of trees, we've proposed a lot of trees around the area, but there was still a request for shade structures over the tot lot equipment. And this was one of the slide photos that we used during our outreach that shows the richness of a small park space where this particular instance isn't fenced in, but it shows with different types of paving, some mounding, some lighting, different kind of site furnishings that are artistic, the level of richness that you can use in small spaces, it becomes about the details. So just because you have a small space does not mean that you can't have a really, really rich, wonderful environment that you can really enjoy. So as the park gets a little bit smaller, you think about a little bit more about your details and how things are going to look and feel and operate. This was a few examples of how we hope to envision or we hope to get the city to prioritize some of the site furnishings that we might be able to use that elevates the park from just using your traditional fencing or lighting or shade structure where it becomes more artistic, it's more custom. And we feel like this really as part of a gateway opportunity into the park calls for something that's a little bit more unique or a little bit more creative instead of just standard. So this was one of our ideas that we proposed and seemed to be very well received in the community. And then we had showed a few other examples of linear parks or areas that were planted that were close to the walkway. And of course, this is the Veterans Park here. And we just use this as an example of how landscape that's done well and with thought can enrich a space even though it's not large as well, and it's already been done in this community with art. And then I'm available if you have any other questions, if you need. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, oh, we have more, okay, sorry.
So staff seeks direction from City Council tonight as to a preferred conceptual plan between Option 1 and Option 2. And if there's no consensus on the proposed plan options, staff seeks direction as to which amenities and design concepts the City Council would like to see incorporated into the park. Staff also seeks direction on the official park name. So Palo Vista Park has been associated with the project to date due to the physical location of the site, but City Council could choose a different name if so desired. Here on this slide, you'll see that we've had some suggestions from both public and staff for you to consider. And there's also, I wanted to mention City Council Policy 400-01, and it's included as Exhibit 5 in your agenda packet that provides some guidelines in terms of naming of public parks and public facilities for your consideration. So with that, Mr. Mayor and myself are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, looks like I have lots of speakers. I'm going to jump in first because I always wait till last. I have a question about, they requested real grass, but at the Wave Water Park, they had real grass and it would never, it was dying and they had dirt because there was so much activity on it. So I can see that maybe that could happen here, plus we have to maintain it and mow it. So that was my thought about that. Another thing, and this probably won't make everybody happy, but we require everybody to underground the electrical when they do a project, and they complain about it, but I feel like unless we underground the electrical, we're not setting a good example. Why do we require other people to do it when we don't do it? So I have a real problem with that. I feel like it should be undergrounded, and I know it takes some of the money from, they can buy a pocket park or something, but I just think if we're going to do a project that we need to set an example when we require other people to do it. So that's my other thing. And then, and why do we need a detention basin in this little piece of property here? Why is that, it's just a little piece of property, so why do we have to have a detention basin?
I'm going to simplify my answer and just say the state of California.
Because, just because.
Because that is what stormwater regulations require.
No matter what you do, no matter how little it is?
That is correct. You have to treat any stormwater that your site might generate.
And we have to do that both for the park space as well as the widening of Civic Center. I will answer one, one of your questions, Mayor.
Okay, which one?
With the grass.
Grass, yeah.
And that is at the Wave Water Park, the small area that they have, they used to have the natural grass in the back is where they have their day camps. So the kids are on it constantly, and the grass was not going to survive. Other areas like Luz Duran, we used to have natural grass there, but because of the impact, typically the soccer players are on it daily, all day long, the grass had no chance of surviving. In a park like this, the thought was it's, there's not active uses like that, it's passive uses so people could enjoy it, and you won't get people kicking it and using it with cleats and different items like that.
Okay, well, I'll go with that, but if it's dead all the time, then I would want to relook at that at some point. And then the other thing I want to know, because there's a lot of ideas that they put forth, you know, things like that, I wonder if some of those, if someone could ever land on one of those, some of those ideas and bring them back to us, or, you know, because they put a lot of ideas out here, and I wonder what we've budgeted for, what in this budget is for play structures and awnings and shade versus the construction of the park and everything? And is the, I know you're going to put a right turn lane in there, and so is that part of the budget? And I guess I just have that question. And then, do you want to answer that one for me or no?
Sure. I'll go back to your first question or your comment about undergrounding of the utilities.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So staff did look at that with our consultant, and the estimate at this time is that it would cost about $500,000. There's 10 poles either onsite or directly adjacent, and it's very expensive to do that work. Our current budget for the park as a whole is $750,000, so if there was a desire to underground the poles, we'd need to allocate additional funding to make that happen. So that's the answer to that one.
Okay, so, and then what is our budget for the, I mean, is it split up between construction costs and split up between like the play structures and the awnings and the shade sales and all that?
So we haven't defined the programming, that's kind of what we're doing tonight. After we receive direction from council, then what we'll do is we'll go back with our consultant who will develop formal construction plans for the park project, which we would then bring back to you for consideration as well.
So you're asking all of us to tell you we like that shade sale and we like that, or no?
Well, you're free to comment on that level of detail, or what you could choose to do if you wanted to is to state a preference for Option 1 or 2 in terms of the conceptual plans, and let us know if there's anything that's not already represented in one of those conceptual plans that you would like to see.
Okay, I prefer Option 2. I'm not sure if it's even important to have a berm as it is to have more green belt and green area. So, and then I'll just let everybody talk, but I like the Palo Vista Park, I like the name Palo Vista, so I'll just add that. And that concludes my remarks, and so I'll start with all you guys. So Councilmember Franklin is first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in favor of keeping the Palo Vista name as a, we'll call it a temporary name until we're really moved as a council that we found the right name for it, something of significance to the community. So I think it'd be a good idea not to rush into that. I really agree with you about the undergrounding of the utilities, and as expensive as it is, I wonder, and I would like to see an itemized description of the charges that are going to be used to develop this park and where we might be able to cut. Because when I look at all the berms, you know, those raised areas are two things. One, they're areas that can't be as well utilized to have a picnic or run around on because they're raised to earth, so they're, you know, they're not flat. The other thing is, I think this park is going to be used by, and by the way, I meant to open with how happy I am on behalf of the people of District 4 that we get to have this beautiful park. And I wanted to say thank you to my colleagues in the council and to city staff for working to implement this goal of acquiring a piece of land, developing a park, and also really addressing something that was severe blight. This is a really phenomenal example of what we're doing correctly in the city. This is going to be a huge turnaround for this area, and this is one of the areas that we've all talked about, and Andrew used the word gateway. This is a gateway. I'm equally as concerned about the appearance of this park as you drive by it as I am if I'm standing in the middle of it. A lot of us are going to use this park as we enjoy it, driving by it. Not everybody in the city is going to be close enough to this park, it's a small park, it's not going to be a destination park. So, but a lot of us are going to drive by it. And so I really want to pay close attention to the aesthetic value for those who are driving past it. I think a more flat surface rather than creating all these earthen berms will make the park more usable, and I think it'll allow you to see into the park rather than block the view and therefore provide a greater aesthetic value. So that's a concern for me. The other thing about the fencing, and I know we're talking about, you know, we talked about a ball going into the street, and I understand that, but if we put up a wall, because we're talking about doing a wall and then a fence on top of the wall, well, two things, how tall is the wall going to, the fence going to be? If it's not going to be six feet tall with razor wire, it's not going to keep anybody out at night. So if it's not going to keep anybody out at night, and I certainly don't want a six-foot fence, that would look awful. So if it's not going to keep people out, and we're really not providing enough space for people to play soccer or football, I just think we really need to think very carefully about the fence, and I really want to see some really creative ideas because the fence is the potential to destroy the visual impact of this park from the street. And I don't want that to happen. I really don't want that to happen because, again, this park has the potential to serve many, many more people than those who will stop and actually enjoy it by setting foot on it, and I don't want to take that away from them. That's very important to me. While we're adding very expensive things, I was, it popped in my mind, and it's very expensive, but what about glass wall? You see a lot of, yeah, it's, I know it's expensive, but I'm throwing it out there as an idea. Yeah, you would have to clean it, but I'll tell you what, it's a lot easier to scrape graffiti off of, you know? Than a stone wall, you know? If we have a masonry wall that's the first 18 inches, then that's probably going to wind up getting...
One of the things I want to mention, you and I had a conversation yesterday, and I probably brought up the fact that it hasn't been decided exactly what the fencing or the concept could look like. I'm the one who brought up the wall concept, and it wasn't a wall in terms of a five-foot wall.
I understand a short wall for the ball.
With fencing above it that you can see through, and that was just a concept, and I don't think that's, they're not there yet in terms of exactly what's going to be proposed.
I didn't tell you this, but we were having that conversation, and you were telling me about the little, the child who was going to have this ball that was smaller than a soccer ball that was going to go through the chain, the wrought iron fence. I was thinking about my nephew who's probably about six, seven, and he was in the backyard with a soccer ball, and all of a sudden, we looked over, the ball's gone, and did you kick, did you kick the ball over the fence? No? I don't think he kicked it, you know? So I mean, you're not going to be able to keep all the balls, which is why it's really, this park, kind of like Veterans Park, I think we need to think of it more for the use is more of an end line, and the landscaping should suggest uses that are compatible. I love the turf, and I want to keep as much of that as possible, but maybe we need a little bit of, maybe we really need to think about the landscaping that separates it from the street and make clear that that area is kind of a no-go zone, you know? And use the landscaping to separate the park from the street rather than what I think's not going to be an attractive fence. I kind of favor the idea of a little bit of a hybrid. I like the circle thing, but I think I like this one where you've got about a third of it consumed with the play structure, and where you've got, and I would even...
Councilmember, are you referring to one or two?
Looking at...
It should be at the bottom of yours.
Number one.
Okay.
Yeah, so I like the circle with the more grass, and, but I'd even get rid of those DG pathways through the moon shape because I think you could walk on the outer perimeter of the moon shape to get where you're going, and that's, you know, the fewer pathways we have, I mean, there's still plenty of pathway to serve pedestrians, but the less pathways, the more, I don't know, I'm open on that one, but that's my thought. Yeah, those are, let's see. Yeah, and the only thing... Yeah, and the only thing I was going to say about the artificial turf is it tends to get very hot and it might not be suitable to sit down on or for little kids to play on, so that is where I think the turf, but you're right, it's a challenge. This, this park is a major, this is a really big deal because it really is going to be such a visual impact for so many people that, like I say, they, they're not going to necessarily walk through the park, but they're going to, they're going to drive past it on a frequent basis, so it's, this, this one we really have to get the irrigation system right and it has to be well maintained because this is going to be a beautiful, beautiful addition to our city, so those are my thoughts.
Maybe Mr. Winnie or Mr. Mayor could talk about the landscaping, the berms and the reasons that it's not entirely flat.
Sure, there's, there's a couple of reasons. So, if you look at this plan design, you have two berms, the one that's closer to Civic Center was purposely located there so that you would actually discourage ball play. And again, the DG or the path that goes through the center of that circular area, again, is meant to discourage ball play. We wanted to do as much as we could to, to make sure that people were using the area passively for picnics and other things instead of active sports. We also, as I mentioned, are going to be asked to accommodate our stormwater detention basin, so the area in the center of this plan was our effort to set aside some space within the park footprint, just so that you're aware that we will have to find space for it somewhere. Currently, we're looking at possibly pushing it towards the most narrow end on the right-hand side of the plan that you see before you, but we'll have to take a look at exactly what our requirements for stormwater runoff are and make sure that we allocate enough space to that. Third, and another thing about berming, we are contemplating creating a little bit of a gradient change between Civic Center and the interior of the park. It's going to be fenced, but then the idea would also be to, again, discourage any balls from going over that fence into traffic.
To the consultant, did you want to say something? He looks like he's dying to stand up here and say something.
I just wanted to add to that, I just wanted to let you guys know, the, the stormwater basins that we're showing here are all diagrammatic, the, the amount of area that needs to be calculated for a basin, we don't know if it's half the size of this room or double the size of this room, so these were diagrammatic concepts, just areas that we thought that we could treat or handle that. And then, once we pull the, the earthwork out of the basins because we're trying to balance the site, we need to put that dirt somewhere else, we don't want to ship it off-site. So, we will somehow create some sort of earthwork, but these aren't, these aren't really big berms, when we're talking about berms, we're talking two feet, three feet, you know, these aren't really gigantic berms. So, that, those would be like the perimeter berms that we may want to have the fence running on so that the fence isn't just stagnant, it just gives some movement to the park, but you'd still be able to see in for security, but we would do some creative things onsite to keep the dirt onsite. Now, the, there's two berms that are in the green areas and that is just to provide some play feature, the earthwork for the green areas and the turf, the berms are a play feature, so that's to give the kids something to climb up and roll down on.
Are you planning on doing some elevations as we go one step further?
We, we could, we, we haven't gotten into that part of the, the project or that part of the level of design, but we could do that.
I'd like to know how much cost we'd eat up in doing some elevations.
We, we can, we can get back to you guys on that, I would know. We could even possibility throw this into a sketch-up model for you and show it to you in 3D, so you get a bill, but, but everything that we're proposing on this is more in the minor, it's not, it's not really large-scale, that it would implement security and traffic. And, and the, the fencing issue, we first approached the project, we, we didn't look at this with a perimeter fence, but security was such a large issue and then the idea of operation and maintenance from your park folks about how to control access, who comes in, who comes out, how do you put a rule sign up, do you have a half a fence on only one area versus not, and the consensus that we got out of that was that they wanted the, a perimeter fence in.
You can't control the access to this park unless you're going to put a six-foot fence in.
I understand.
And it's, I mean, at that point, the whole thing is...
And I think the limit we were at is like five feet, and if, Tony, can you go to the fencing example? So, if we, if security became an issue and we did have to do some sort of fence, we were hoping to do a really beautiful artistic fence like the one shown to the right in the green that you could see through, but becomes this artistic statement, which looks like a piece of art running through the landscape as you move through, so it serves as art, it serves as a physical barrier, it's aesthetically pleasing, but that also comes at a cost. The, the one issue about a smaller park where we put a lot of details in, it raises the cost, so when we get past this level and we start doing a budget, we will start having to prioritize all of these things.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I, I think we absolutely need to have a fence. I know that we're not going to keep people out, but we have to keep kids in and when that ball does go over the fence, that stops the kid from immediately chasing the ball into the street, so. And I do like some of the examples that you showed at some of the workshops on the different fence ideas, hopefully we can find something that's going to be aesthetically pleasing because this is the entry point to our city and therefore I do like the La Entrada name. I think that's a great name for the entryway to our city. I had a, well, first of all, I like option two, however, on option two, I would like to see the swings moved over to where the turf berm is at. Again, just really thinking about safety, probably will never happen, but that's where the kids are going to, you know, kids are going to be spending a lot of their time, it's closest to the street where it is right now on option two, I would like to see that, basically where the turf, you know, to swap that where the turf berm is at. Is that a difficult thing to do? I wouldn't think it would be.
No, that we, we can certainly take a look at doing that. One of the upsides to the current layout in option two is that the play areas take more physical ownership of the space that's there and so that was one of the things that we looked at when we were creating this plan option, so that you, you are physically giving more ownership over to families that are, are using those spaces.
But we will, go ahead.
And it also has to do with the...
Come up, come up to the microphone, Andrew.
Same thing with the fence, we were also looking at signage and the fence and then the idea of the shade canopies, if we did shade sales, they would become part of the vernacular that you would see as you move down through the street, so the canopies that sit over top of this play feature would anchor that corner and serve as a piece of artwork that you'd see through the tree canopies, so you're getting multiple kind of layering of effect of what's there. It's very easy to move, we could study moving it around, but I just, I can remind you, if we do have a fence here, we have like, each one of those tree canopy symbols, there's 20 to 25 feet, so we'll have, you know, a five-foot fence and planting and trees and a very decent buffer.
What about the monument sign, how big is that going to be?
To be determined, it's, it's really just a graphic holder, the monument sign could be a sign itself or it could be something we hang on the...
Because the monument sign could serve as a nice buffer in case some idiot loses control.
Absolutely, and same with the trees as well and we could, you know, incorporate large boulders on the corner as well, so there are some, but if you'd like us to do that, we, we could do that, I just wanted to make you aware.
I want to make sure it's as safe as possible and that's why I'm in favor of the fence as well, I mean, we're hoping to have kids play there, not adults and, I mean, if you feel that that's going to, you know, make it more friendly to children and, and families, then I'm all for that as well because...
So, it, it just, I'd like to ask one question, are you in favor of just taking that one area and moving it or would you like us to combine both of the tot lots? Do you like the idea of two separate play spaces?
I don't mind being two separate play spaces, yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so then the other questions I had that some of the, our constituents have asked about, like community garden, I know that got, was considered, but it sounds like that got nixed.
Yeah, it was considered, you know, the bottom line is that this is a very small park and so we had a lot of competing programming taking place when you take in consideration the passive play spaces and the children's play areas and the walkways and then your stormwater requirements, it doesn't leave a whole lot of space left over. Not to say that we couldn't accommodate it, but that was one thing that fell by the wayside.
Okay.
We also, I think it's mentioned in the staff report, we have an existing community garden over in the townsite area that has space available currently, that's...
But I know there's a lot more, there's still a demand for community gardens, so, and I know these people aren't going to be going to townsite for that community garden. I mean, a community garden is usually walking distance from your home, so, that's fine, I understand, we're limited on space, it's three-quarters of an acre, something like that, right, so, I get it. Splash pad, was that, what was the reason we didn't consider that? That seems to be a pretty popular request.
They are popular, there, there's two reasons, one is budget, they're very expensive not only to install, but, you know, to maintain over time and then two, we did consider the fact that if there is a drought, if those drought regulations kick in once again, then that fountain would be turned off, so you essentially have a big concrete area, so it's just kind of weighing the positives and negatives.
Okay, and I would like to also reiterate my support for undergrounding the utilities if we could find a way to do that and finance that, not only because we require it of other projects, but aesthetically it's, makes a big difference and I think that's, make a huge difference to our entry. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you for this report and for your diagrams, it's good to see you both again. I'm going to start off with the ground, undergrounding, for the reasons already stated, I want to see what we can do to do that. It's really not good that we require it of everybody else, but we're not willing to do it ourselves and it really is, adds to, it detracts from the, the view of the park of what we're trying to achieve, having those there, and I think it's time that we put those underground, so I'm, I'm supportive of that as well and I understand the cost of it and I will need to look at the budget and find where we can pull that from. The other question I had, well, just a comment on the, the fencing going around, I like the idea of the fence that you have on it that is artistic, it's not just going to be chain link or straight wrought iron or something, but I also wanted it to be perhaps a little bit more decorative and I don't know how well this is going to be received, but on our sign for Paseo Point, Paseo Santa Fe, we have our city's official plant and our bird, which is Anna's hummingbird and the, is it the California lilac, I think? So, taking the same fencing, because I do like what, what I see here, but I wasn't sure if there's a possibility that we could incorporate a medallion made of the same material as the fence every so often up to match the medallion that's on the sign over Santa Fe Avenue. I think it would be nice if we could incorporate the two, two ends of Santa Fe together in that respect, so I would like to see us incorporate our city and that also brings, you know, part of our city heritage more into it, into the design. I like option two as well and from the very beginning of this discussion, a couple of years ago when we started talking about this, it was all about, yes, we want to do the park, but we have to make sure that the kids are safe and so the fence, we've always talked about, the fence wasn't to keep people out, it's to keep the kids from running in the street and as, as a parent, I think we all know as, as parents, your kid hits a ball, man, it's like a rubber band attached to them, they go right after it and, and that's what the parent's job is, is to grab them, but that's such a very busy street and if, and, you know, just the split second a parent might miss that collar or something, so I definitely like the idea of the fence and it needs to be tall enough that kids aren't going to be able to just hop it really fast and it needs to be low enough to the ground that little balls aren't going to get under or little bodies aren't going to crawl under looking for their ball. So, I, I do absolutely agree with the fence concept and with some more design on it, but I did want to ask about in option two, it doesn't have the DG sidewalk, the decomposed granite, I actually prefer that and I don't know why it was taken out of option two and I see that the Parks and Recreation Commission had chosen option two, were there any comments at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting about decomposed granite versus concrete?
The only comment I recall, I believe it was Mr. Rhodes made the comment, for those individuals in wheelchairs, that DG is sometimes challenging to navigate, so he was not a fan, but other than that, I don't think that they addressed it.
Okay, you sound like, you look like you want to address that, please, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind.
Thank you, we, we showed option one with DG trails in it as, as an option for overall programming and then we showed option two with concrete as a different option. Price-wise, install concrete's just a little bit more expensive, but DG is still pretty expensive, but it's also more of an operation and maintenance thing too, DG takes a lot more maintenance over time to keep it nice, to keep it ADA accessible and from letting it get bad, so I believe the ADA question, comment came up and then it was also an operations thing, I think, they lean more towards the concrete, but our options just showed it as a talking point really, to get feedback from you guys.
Okay, thank you, I can, I can see that, I can appreciate that very much. The, the swing set being moved over to the middle, I think where the triangle is, if that's where Deputy Mayor Aguilar, I was thinking. When I first looked at these designs, my first thought was that's too close to the street for a little kid, because you know, they like to jump off the swing and then they go running and squealing, I don't want them running and squealing around too close to the street, so I'm okay if you move it, but I understand the distance that you were trying to tell us that we have from the swing set area to the street is probably, did you say 25 feet, 30 feet? I'm just trying to...
Thereabouts, yeah.
I'm just trying to remember, my, my, my twins aren't, you know, three anymore, but man, they can cover 25 feet really fast. Pardon me? Right, right, no, I understand, I understand, so I'm okay with it being there, but if you wanted to move it, I, I don't have a problem with that either and I do love the, the art to be put in, I love the idea, we've talked about that at some of our other parks and all over the city, so I really like that, but I did want to address the monument sign because that's come up in a couple of comments and in a couple of questions and I think the city clerk, do you have the picture for the monument sign to share?
I added it to the folder where this presentation is, it's called Service Signs, I believe, it's a late edition.
So, we, we have a monument sign here in Vista already, it's at the corner of Postal Way and Civic Center Drive and we drive by it every day when we come down this street and it frequently, nobody has ownership of it, I've contacted every service organization in the city and, there you go, and the, the one on the left side is the current one and I don't know why it came out black and white, I apologize, and then on the upper right-hand side, you can see it from across the street, but the upper left-hand side is what it looks like right now and it frequently is, it's not kept up, nobody know who knows who is supposed to be responsible for it and the trees around it tend to grow in front of it and the weeds come up around it, so I've commented a couple of times and I don't know who, probably, probably staff here and whoever you are, thank you, but somebody goes out there whenever we say something and they trim the trees back and they pull out all the weeds and it looks good for a little while, but it's still very difficult to see and it's very small and we have a couple of other service organizations in the community that would like to put medallions on there, but there's no room left to put medallions on there and so I brought this up a few years ago about redoing the monument sign and making it bigger, making it look a little bit more updated, cleaning it perhaps, and then I found this other picture, if you look in the, the right lower side, that's a picture of the original monument sign and it looks like they just took part of it and moved it over, as you can see, the lettering is the same and I don't know exactly where that was, I'm assuming that's somewhere down on Vista Way it used to be, but it was in more... I'm assuming that's somewhere down on Vista Way it used to be, but it was in more open space, and you could see it, and the cars would go by, and you'd go, oh, wow, there's a Kiwanis Club, or there's a soroptimist meeting or something. And where our sign is now really doesn't do that for people. And when I talk to people and I talk about the monument sign, they go, what monument sign? So, I was actually pretty impressed in the community comments that said, we already have a monument sign, why do we need another one? Those are the only two people in the whole city I've ever known who knew where it was. So, I did bring up to put a monument sign here on this park as you're coming down Civic Center Drive, right on that little corner. And a comment had been made that it would cost, you know, money from the city. Well, actually, we have a life scout who would like to do this as an Eagle project. And we have quite a few Eagle projects in the community that have done very, very well. And I've already met with this young man, and I was going to meet with him again Friday to get his designs and his ideas, because we walked the property, we looked at some other things. And I had to cancel that appointment. That was my fault. I wasn't able to meet him on Friday. So, you're, and then if you want to put up the next slide, Kathy? So, he picked out some pictures of other monument signs around places, and, I don't know if it's going to come up, but, so, we were thinking, as we do with other projects, Eagle projects that are done in the city, a city staff person is assigned to work with the life scout, the Eagle candidate, as well as any professional person who has to be on board. Like when we did Rainbow Bridge, we had to have a professional engineer who donated time and worked with the city staff, worked with the scout. So, anyway, the scout will be working with city staff and whatever professional person in that industry is stipulated by the city to have. But he came up with, these are different ideas of what other city monument signs are, and it's very hard to see, but I'm happy to pass down my picture. So, the design of the monument sign is up for the city staff to work with the scout on what we want to do, how much space is set aside for it, and exactly what it is we want to bring into the city, because this is a gateway to the city. Yes, this is a small neighborhood park, but coming in off of the freeway on Civic Center Drive, this is a gateway into our city. And this is one of the first areas that people coming into the city, going to the Strawberry Festival or going to the Moonlight Amphitheater or whatever, that this is one of the first places that they see when they come in. And so, as Councilman Franklin stated, it really is important that we have the aesthetics that really, that really talk to who we are as a community. And so, he's very interested in coming up with designs and talking with city staff about what this monument sign should look like. But I think it's really important, and it doesn't have to be huge. I mean, it can be small, it can be short, it can be wide, it can be whatever we need it to be, depending on the space that you've set aside in there. So, I would also like to make sure that we do include some kind of a monument sign that shows, welcome to Vista, and these are the service organizations that do things in our community, and this is a vibrant, thriving, close-knit community. And I think a monument sign adds to that visual. And it's a visual that can add or evoke feeling for our community. So, those are my thoughts on this. I want to say thank you very, very much for all the work you've done and for all the community members who participated in the community meetings that we had on this. So, thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Councilmember Green.
All right. So, I like conceptual option number two. I like the fence. In Europe, they fence their parks. Fences actually do keep people out, and you can make them look very nice, pretty wrought iron fences, artistic, whatever you got to do. I do like the picture of the pretty brown fence there. So, let's see. Fence is good. La Entrauda was on my top list of park names. I do like the idea of kind of, you know, wait and getting a little more community feedback, as Paula Vista does kind of say where it's at, but I think La Entrauda's great. As far as the monument sign, I personally, and this is just a personal opinion, I think those monument signs are hideous with all of those different logos on them. I wouldn't want that to be the first thing anybody sees coming into my town. I would rather have a big Vista sign with maybe like a big boulder or something that kind of would stop a car from flying in to the actual park. I'm all for redoing that old dilapidated monument sign, but I definitely don't want to make it bigger and make it the first thing people see, just me. It's too many colors, it's too busy, it looks hideous, and it doesn't really flow with this particular park concept, in my opinion. I do think it's a great project for an Eagle Scout or a Life Scout, and it can definitely be remodeled, but I would definitely, me personally, I am against having that as the main sign coming into my town. But aside from that, option two's good. Move the swing set or don't move the swing set. I think you did your research on that, but I'm for that option as opposed to the other option. And thank all the community for all their input.
I actually have speakers. I want to say two more things, I don't have speakers. Is the widening of Civic Center, because they're, it's going to, you're going to narrow the road, Civic Center a little bit, and put a left or right turn lane in there, is that part of the park budget?
No, it's not part of this current project. It is slated to begin as soon as they can secure easements from the 76th Station and the other property owners along the way.
Okay. Because I was hoping that wasn't part of our budget for that. And I also, and I also, I don't have a problem with the cement. I think it's a classier to have cement rather than a DG trail. I just think it would, you know, for maintenance purposes, and I just think it looks better. DG kind of, if it rains, it gets kind of ruddy, and, you know, I'm thinking, I don't think that that would be, we're trying to make it a really nice-looking entryway to Vista, so I wouldn't want to go with the DG. That would be my thing. And what else, everything else? So, I have the cement. And as far as the thing with the, all the, what do we call that? The, where all the... Monument, monument sign, thank you. Have them just build it where it is. We take that down and build a nicer one where it is. Or across the street, there's a Kiwanis Park over there, there's a whole park. No, it's not, it's not on the corner, the same side of the street, just past the gas station, on the other side of the corner there. So, if they, yeah, so either rebuild it there or take it over and put it in the Kiwanis Park, that'd be another place. It would be going probably out of town, but you could put it over there, you could see it coming, but just a different place. I think it doesn't go with this park, the landscape and everything. So, that's, those are my comments. So, now, I will go to the, we have three speakers. So, Carol Jeffries, is Carol still here? And sorry I put you guys last, I forgot you were here, that things were here, so, we're happy to hear from you. And then followed by Joshua Tienda, and then followed by Matthew Menke.
I'm here because I really want to advocate for a community garden, and I've been talking to Tony about this. I've done, I've been to two Parks and Rec Commission meetings. I'm dogged about this. And I think that so many of these aspects can be implemented and still have a community garden of this space if it's wanted by the people that live in that community. Because I agree with you that people aren't going to go to townsite to garden when they live in those apartments. There is a lot of gardinesque. I heard that word a lot. Why don't we just have gardens? If you want an Eagle Scout to do a project, they can build garden beds. You could save enough money to underground your wires or build a bathroom or something like that. It's so much, such a cheaper option. You can still have space for a park with the park benches. My property is about a third of the size of this, and I'm just thinking about three of my properties and how much I could do with that much. I could have a playground, I could have a community garden, I could have an open space with three of my properties. So, I really think that we need to think outside the box, and we live in the climatic wonderland. We have all these gardeners here. I think it would be a great way to enter the city and to see people out there working in their garden plots. They have agency in their community when they have a place to work the soil. They, it cuts down on crime, and you have, always have people there working, so you don't have an unintended space where there might be people who want to loiter or do something. Now, I was at the Parks and Rec Commission last night meeting, and I was advised to bring studies. So, I looked up today, and I found some bullet points on a great website about community gardens. It says here, "Community gardens help improve air and soil quality," which feeds right into the CAP that we were talking about earlier, "increases biodiversity of plants and animals, reduces food miles that are required to transport nutritious food, can replace impervious structures and improve water filtration, can reduce neighborhood waste through composting, and actively impact the urban microclimate. Also, increase access to fresh foods, improve food security, increase physical activity through garden maintenance activities, improve, I'm just a minute, improve dietary habits through education, increase fruit and vegetable intake, reduce obesity and diabetes, improve mental health and promote relaxation." And from the CDC, gardens in urban areas are positively correlated with a decrease in crime rates. So, I think these are all great reasons to consider this. I think that, you know, I know you've got somebody that you paid to do these mockups, but I think that it's really worth a second look and maybe looking into that neighborhood and see if people are really interested in that, and it would be a great benefit to those people in that area.
Thank you. Could you grow, no, I wanted to ask the, could you grow stuff in the detention basin? Could you have a garden in a detention basin? No? You have to do wild plants, like wild things, weeds?
What about raised garden?
I can't hear you. You have to go up here and say...
Stormwater detention basins, the maintenance and the operations, they're designed for specific plant materials and soils, and there's certain things that you put in there. And then when it floods, your garden would completely be drowned out.
I know, but that's when it floods, but, I mean, out here...
I believe it would be an operational and maintenance conflict between two different uses of people trying to operate and maintain those facilities. Because it's an infrastructural facility, so they're engineered, they drain out. I don't believe they would be a compatible use.
So, it's made to drain water out, rather than...
It holds water and it filters it, and then it drains it back out. But it depends upon how they're designed and what their requirements are, which we don't know yet. We don't know if we have to detain it or whether we have to filter it and drain it out, have to have it engineered. Sometimes they're lined with...
This seems like such a waste. If you, to me, it seemed like if you could make it be a dual-purpose thing, it'd be good, so, okay. All right. So, sorry, Joshua. Tienda, then followed by Matthew Menke. Is Matthew still here?
I was in the last Parks and Rec Commission, and they talked about all the, that they mentioned, and two things, or three things. I really like option two, like Moser said. It makes it look like an actual guitar, which is why I like the name Guitar Park, because it's...
Is that here? I don't think...
And then last, about, I agree with Councilman Joe, that sign is really, really, it looks old and outdated, and we need something more modern, more pleasing to the eye. So, if you have something, maybe, something that will really catch the, when we're entering, because it's a gateway, it's a gateway park, so we need to have something that catches the eye, you know? I don't think that, that sign really speaks, like, it's a attention grabber. No, it's like, you really have to squint to see every little thing, no? No. So, that's my question, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Ms. Matthew here? I think you might have left. Matthew Menke? Okay. Okay. Councilmember Rigby.
I just wanted to put out there for the name. I actually, I thought Guitar Park was pretty funny. I thought that would be kind of cute, but I actually favor Gateway Park, because it is a gateway into our community, and it's a major, major gateway into our community. So, I prefer Gateway Park, you know, if you're taking role there.
So, do you have enough, do you have, I think we're just supposed to give direction, right, today? That's what you want? Do you guys have enough direction, or is there anything?
That is correct. From what I've heard, option number two is the one that's chosen by all the council members with a few tweaks here and there. And it sounds like there's a couple of different opinions on the name of the park, so perhaps we'll continue that discussion, and we can complete that another time.
We'll also look into the cost for undergrounding the poles and the lines, so you have that? And we'll increase our budget.
Yes, now it frustrates you. Okay. So, with that, we are, that takes us to oral communications. Do we have any oral communications?
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay. Is Linda Friedman here? You checked for the CAP, but you, check oral communications. So, Linda, followed by Matt Lacomte, followed by Carl Hughes. Carl left, I think, yeah.
Does that mean that I can't address the CAP question that I, or the statement that I had? It's okay if I can't.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I want to, I wish that the young man were here, because the work that he did was phenomenal. The Climate Action Plan that has come before you tonight prioritizes targeted complex areas to achieve compliance with the algorithmic standards as set by the California Environmental Quality Act. In order to implement and monitor, and I think I want to not even read this, because there are two main points that I wanted to make tonight. One was definitely to support a full-time position to help implement, report, and carry this out, because it's a major plan that is being put before you. And second, as I was reading the action plan, the updates have been, or the reports have been done every five years, and I believe that they should be done every year, especially with the way that our climate is changing so rapidly and the restrictions that are being placed on us, and the standards that are being set by the California Environmental Act. And I would like to see the community involved in that every, like, every year. That's what I had to say with that. Hopefully, that was short enough. And now, I'm going to put on a different hat. At the last city council meeting on August 7th, numerous community members stood before you to voice extreme concerns and even anger that the city council took it upon itself to vote on and pass a motion to join the amicus brief against the California Values Act, even though one very important council member was not present. That the council agreed to represent the city of Vista in this manner without community input in at least a survey demonstrates that the council represented only those present council members, not the entirety of the residents. It is therefore incumbent, I believe, upon the council to take a revote when all council members are present. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Lacomte?
I heard a lot today about the Climate Action Plan, CAP, but I'm very confused. I didn't actually hear a plan. The meeting ended, and no one really gave direction to John, so I'm not sure what we accomplished. As far as I'm concerned, our plan for CAP is to plant a lot of trees, which is nice. Go trees. It's not going to guess to where we need to go. No one said, "I'm in favor of community choice energy." No one said, "I'm in favor of CAP implementation position being filled." Those are the two key elements to the CAP plan. What we got instead was a lot of time spent on signs and a park and the name. I think it was telling the council felt more comfortable talking about that. Councilman Aguilar, you talked about we were the third city. I think you were referring to us finishing third place in a race that was run six years ago. You then said, "There are three cities that don't even have a plan." Well, how about that for expectations? Let's pat ourselves on the back, because other people stink. You guys are really dropping the ball on the Climate Action Plan? And I think we're here today not because it's important, but because it's not important. Just gets getting put off and put off. Now, on a lighter subject, I did enjoy the ramblings, rambling thoughts of Councilmember of... Franklin, telling us all what he wants for his very expensive park. You seem to be enjoying yourself, talking about the aesthetics. And it definitely seemed like we could cover the cost of the CAP implementation position with the money you're planning on this very small park. Councilman Aguilar, on the last meeting, we were asking you where you stood on SB 54. You didn't really give us an answer, you gave us more of a, I was on a family vacation. The 20-year vote sounded like someone who was telling us you had an excused absence. What we were really asking for is where do you stand on the issue? And you didn't cover that at all in the last meeting. So for your district, on the matter of the California Values Act, there was no difference between when you were here and when you weren't. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. That leaves us to our remarks. So I will start with Councilmember Green.
Lucky me, thank you, everybody who stayed for the entire meeting tonight, I definitely appreciate it. Do want to give a shout out to John Conley as well for all of his work on the CAP. And I do want to let the members of the audience know, from a CAP standpoint, basically what we were saying was, we agree with all the city input, and we want to make sure that John comes back to us with a plan to incorporate the citizens' ideas, and let us know what the cost implications were of that, before we actually commit to the particular, you know, items per se in that plan. So we definitely are moving forward on it, so don't fret on that. Thank you, guys, again, for being here, you are appreciated.
Councilmember Franklin?
No more ramblings for me.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby. Deputy Mayor?
Just that, I've got the two meetings with NCTD this week, so hopefully we'll get some positive results for the community on those, and I think that's about it.
Okay. And I have, let's see, I have comments here, so get help with using a computer, anybody, or a tablet or a smartphone, Thursday, August 30, at the Vista Library, bless you. Bring your own device, or use one of the libraries, you can, either way. No registration's required, drop in anytime between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. That's August 30 at the library. Number two, congratulations to the city of Vista for being recognized by the North San Diego Business Development Center for providing outstanding service to small businesses. The city works closely with the business community, which is instrumental to the city's local economy, and is eager to support and help small businesses grow. Third, join the city of Vista on Saturday, September 15, at Buena Creek Site, for this year's I Love a Clean San Diego's Coastal Cleanup Day. That's September 15, Saturday. Details and registration are online at cleanupday.org. And lastly, stay cool this Labor Day weekend at the Wave Water Park, which is open on Labor Day from 10 to 4. So mark your calendar for Military Appreciation Day on Sunday, September 9, at the Wave. Active retired personnel receive free admission and up to six tickets at a reduced cost. Details are online at thewavewaterpark.com. And are you going to talk about, on Thursday, they have, there's a debate at the Shadow Ridge Country Club for the candidate for this...
There's a candidate forum at the Shadow Ridge Country Club on Thursday at 7:00 p.m. So...
Was that on your list?
Community is welcome to attend that, and that's put on by the Shadow Ridge Homeowners' Association.
Right.
And then one reminder that city facilities are closed on Monday, September 3, for Labor Day, and so trash will be delayed for one day as well. That's it.
Okay. If that's all, then we are adjourned. 9:06.
It was a long night.